Just waiting for the live stream. There you go. So both the recording and live stream are on, Mr. Warden, so you're good to go.
Excellent. Can you hear all hear me now? Excellent. So I just want to say welcome to everyone. It's July 8th and I want to welcome everyone to this meeting of County Council. Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Thank you. Good morning, Council. We have all members of County Council in attendance with the exception of Councillor Gamble and Councillor Mackey. Nope, Scott is here. Councillor Mackey is here, so Councillor Gamble only. I will let you know, Mr. Warden, when he arrives.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We'll turn to item number three, which is our land acknowledgement. I will say that we acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality, and culture of the Ania Shinabek, the Six Nations of the Grand River, the Howden O'Shawney, and the Wendat, Windat, Wyandot peoples on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We recognize also the Meti and the Inuit, whose ancestors shared this land and these waters. May we all, as treaty people, live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all of its diverse peoples. We will next turn to Declaration of Interest. Is there any Declaration of Interest, Council? Community or otherwise?
I see Councillor Millen's hand.
Councillor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I will be declaring an interest in report PDR-CW-16-20. Of course, that is in the Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Yes. That's when you'll declare it, Councillor Millen? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a Declaration of Interest of any kind? If one does arise during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. Item number five, Adoption of Minutes. Five A is County Council and Committee of the Whole Minutes dated June 24, 2021. That is moved by Councillor Patterson and seconded by Councillor Gamble. Council, is there any discussion? Councillor Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. It's a small matter, but I wonder, I note in the minutes that the declaration, or rather, the land acknowledgement is not there in its entirety. There's simply a note made that the land acknowledgement was said, but I'm wondering, could it be included in its entirety in the minutes? Because someone reading the minutes would see that the land acknowledgement was there, but they don't know what it was, the verbiage. And I think it might be, might be a good thing to have the verbiage actually in the minutes. Just a thought on my part. I don't know what the clerk thinks of that, or anyone else for that matter.
Madam Clerk? Thoughts?
I, when we first started with the land acknowledgement, after the policy was passed, I did look at others, what they were doing, and most that have one indicate that it is, has been read, or just basically that it's a land acknowledgement. I don't recall that I saw any others that had it specifically contained within each set of minutes, but whatever council's wish is, we can certainly look into that further.
Councillor Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess, to be honest, I'm not that terribly concerned what others do. I'm, I'd like to see it in our minutes, in its entirety. But again, I'll, I'll leave that to, to the clerk and the warden, or any other councillors if they'd like to express an interest. Thank you.
Councillor Potter?
Thank you. I, I could accept either that or have it printed in full on the agenda, which we do at our meetings usually, so that way it, it's there for the reading, but I do like the idea of including it in the minutes.
Very good. Any other comments on this? Where do we take it from here? Do we need a motion or something like that, Madam Clerk?
If you'll leave it with me, I'll just do a little bit more digging, and then I'll bring something back to council.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll call the question then on those.
I'm sorry, Mr. Warden. I did see Councillor Soever's hand.
Oh, my. Councillor Soever, go ahead.
Yes, so.
No, you're.
Okay, very good. Okay, so I'd just like to report that in our minutes, we do include the acknowledgement tax, so just help the clerk out there, that we do, and we do have it on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councillor Soever. I do not see any other hands. So with that said, I think I'll call the question on the minutes dated June 24th. Is there, is there anyone opposed? And seeing none, thank you very much. That is carried. Item B, Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting Minutes, which are also dated June 24th. It is moved by Councillor Patterson and seconded by Councillor O'Leary. Do we need to have discussion on anything in those? We'd have to go into closed session, of course. And seeing none, I will call the question. Is there anyone opposed? So no hands. That is Carrie. Thank you very much. Item five C is the Long Term Care Committee of Management Minutes dated June 29. And it is moved by Councillor Robinson and seconded by Councillor Clumpus. Any discussion on that package? Councillor Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I don't know why I'm picking on myself this morning so often, but nonetheless, I note that in response to, to report number 18-21, the CaseMx Index Funding Reductions. I see that the letter is going to be sent to the Minister of Long Term Care, Mr. Phillips. Should a copy also be sent to our local MPP, Mr. Walker? I think it's important that he understands that his government has made a variety of commitments to improving long-term care funding and so on and so forth, and yet here we see reductions. I think it's important that Mr. Walker see the actions of his ministry colleague.
Councillor Mill, I can tell you that a copy has been sent to Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on these minutes? Then I'll call the question. Is there anyone opposed to approval? And seeing none, that too is Carrie. Thank you very much. Not need to have any close, you have no closed meeting matters, and so that takes us to item number seven, Bylaw 5116-21. It is being moved by Councillor Carlton and seconded by Councillor Mill. Any discussion on that bylaw? Seeing none, I will call the question on that as well. Is there anyone opposed to approval of the bylaw? All hands being shown, I will say that is Carrie. Item number eight, Good News and Celebrations. Councillor Soever?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Just like to report that last weekend, the Blue Mountain Grants and Donations Committee held their second annual lobster fest, and they served over 700 meals. And they also had a number of sponsors who contributed to the skies and and also there was a pack of cosmetics that people could buy, donated by a cosmetics firm. So the, altogether with the 700 meals and the sponsors and donations, the event raised over $50,000 for the Grants and Donations Committee, and the Grants and Donations Committee will be putting out another call for applications from community organizations to funding, and that money will be distributed throughout the community.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Councillor Mackey, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. Just as all of you are aware, the Township of Chatsworth, the Mother Nature showed her, her, well.
Her might.
Her, her, yeah, her ugly side, I guess, and sent a tornado through our municipality on June 26th. So a tornado was never good news, but certainly the community response was, you know, really good news. And I just wanted to extend my sincere thanks to members of the community for the way they reached out that night. Neighbors were checking on neighbors, helping one another, clearing the roads for emergency vehicles. Fortunately, no one was injured. There certainly was damage done to some properties, and the community has certainly rallied around to assist in those properties. Also, just wanted to acknowledge that the Premier had reached out, Premier Ford reached out on Sunday, offering assistance, as did the warden, and I appreciate the call, Mr. Warden, from you. Minister Clarke also contacted us. Fortunately, no emergency provincial dollars were required or requested. Also, other neighboring municipalities, you know, sitting around the table, sincere thanks from the Township of Chatsworth for reaching out. We did have crews come from a number of neighboring municipalities to assist in the the road clearing efforts over the last week, and I can report that that work has been primarily done. Certainly, I want to mention the Minnetonka community from Meaford showed up in the village of Walters Falls and assisted a number of seniors in clearing some of the debris that was in, in that neighborhood. So it was certainly a community effort and very much appreciate the assistance that was provided. There was a, you know, we did reach out to some neighbors that brought road crews in, and that was greatly appreciated. But there was a number of other municipalities that also offered assistance, and we thank you for that. So that's my good news, Mr. Warden. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, Councillor Mackey. Councillor Mackey, I wonder, what is the status of the cleanup?
The cleanup is pretty much complete. The roadwork has all been done now. You know, the day of and the, the next day, the primary job of the Roads Department was getting the roads, you know, cleared. And, but a lot of that was moving the stuff into the ditches, so over the last week, our Roads Department and neighboring municipalities, Roads Departments were clearing up the sides of the road. The one family that was primarily affected, they continue to work with insurance to make determination with engineers whether to completely, you know, tear down the old building and rebuild, or, so that's still ongoing. There is a GoFundMe page that's been set up for this area family, and contributions are coming in, and as well as community members have been gathering needed items for that family, so again, we appreciate that. But the cleanup is almost complete now. Certainly, some of the individual property owners will have, you know, in their woodlots will have cleanup going on for probably the next year or so, but overall, we're in good shape, so thank you.
Thank you again, Councillor Mackey. Councillor Desai, you are next.
Thank you, Warden Hex. The piece of good news that I'm bringing is their open Fall Fair Committee is hosting a a pickup drive-through dinner of roast beef on July 24th. Tickets are $20 per adult, and there's reduced prices for kids under 12 and kids under 5, no charge. You can purchase tickets by e-transfers to rocklinas@outlook.com. With your indulgence, Warden Hex, I do have a question for the good news celebration statement from, from Councillor Soever, with regards to the Grants and Donations Committee. Is the Grants and Donations Committee at all funded by the municipality, or is it entirely self-funded? Thank you.
Councillor Soever? You're muted, sir.
Yeah, yes. No, the Grants and Donations Committee we set up because the, the municipality used to fund grants and donations. And so this term, we decided that we would focus on raising the money through activities in the community. And it has the advantage not only of raising funds, but also building community spirit, and that we've had a wide range of volunteers. As you know, Blue Mountains is a rapidly growing community, and so some of our new community members have taken the opportunity to volunteer at the various events ran by the Great Grants and Donations Committee. So now, the, the Grants and Donations Committee does act independently and does, well, it's still a committee of council, but basically it raises the money needed for the, the Grants and Donations Program, which formerly was funded by tax dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Robinson, you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. In July 1921, the Great War Veterans Association, in which 1925 would unify the other groups to form the Canadian Legion, adopted the poppy as the flower of remembrance. 2021 marks the 100th anniversary of the iconic poppy symbol of remembrance. 100 years ago, the precursor to the Royal Canadian Legion officially recognized the poppy as Canada's lasting symbol of remembrance. A century later, the Legion is commemorating this historic milestone, and that is information that has been posted through the Royal Canadian Legion, Branch 308 Durham. Thank you very much, Mr. Warden.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Warden, I will just, I will just note that I think likely due to the weather, we have lost Councillors Clumpus and Keveney right now.
Yes, I thought I saw some hands up, and then they disappeared. If they come back, maybe I'll give them a chance at that time. Is there anyone else with good news?
Councillor Soever?
Councillor Soever, go ahead.
Well, it's not good news, but I can confirm the power is up here in Thornbury. I'm at the Town Hall, so I still have internet because we have an emergency generator, but that may be why Councillor Clumpus and Keveney have disappeared.
Okay. Councillor Boddy?
Whoops, thank you, Warden Hex. Canada Day. On Canada Day, Councillor O'Leary and I attended two events, and then one of them was at Park here in On Sound, named after Corporal Robert T. James Mitchell, who died in Afghanistan. We're there with the Freedom Riders, who are made up of Afghanistan veterans, and they do a great job looking after one another and, and helping the Mitchell family. Bob and Carol Mitchell not only lost their son in Afghanistan, their other son died only two or three months later of cancer, so we went up, raised a new Canadian flag and lowered it to half-mast, and it's wonderful to be able to recognize Canada's contribution and people like the men that were standing there that went overseas to take the Canadian way of life to the rest of the world and share it, and as we go, still, we see a, a respect for our country from outside of the, outside of Canada and people moving here because of our way of life. So it was special to celebrate Canada Day with them on that day. The second event, we had the Council General of Republic of Poland from Toronto come up, lay flowers at a, at a plaque that he has put up in recognition of the thousand plus soldiers who were trained in On Sound during the Second World War. As I think most people in Gray County know, one of the Polish soldiers carved a poem or a statement into a tree on the Bruce Trail that is still there some 60 years later, talking about Poland's freedom. So this is known to many Polish people around the world. And the Council General chose Canada Day to come up to thank Canada and Canadian soldiers for First and Second World War, for their fight in Poland, as well as the, the training of those soldiers. So it's a pretty special day to, to recognize Canada Day. And there was lots of pressure to cancel Canada Day, which we chose not to do. Many people are concerned about indigenous people across this country, and that's great. My pendulum swing kind of the other way with even doing the land acknowledgement, but I think it's it's words and maybe not a lot of actions. If people are really concerned, I encourage them to go to, there's a page for United Way for the Kichiname Wickwidong Park in On Sound that is a reconciliation project, as well as we'll have education after. You can donate money to it. You can go to DowneyWanJack.ca, and of course, Gord Downie was the singer of the Tragically Happen. There's a fund there to help with reconciliation. There is a free university course you can take at University of Alberta. There's a free university course you can take at U of T if you want to educate yourself on what's going on, or what you should know about indigenous affairs in Canada. So there's things that we can all do individually and take those steps that are more than just word service, I suppose. So that was certainly the Chiefs, the Tsawqin and Jibway Nation, when we named the bridge a week before, really encouraged us to become educated on, on the past, and, and we've tried to share that word about education on on Canada Day and still celebrate Canada Day. So thanks.
Thank you very much for that, Councillor Boddy. And I wonder, Councillor Boddy, if you might share perhaps with the clerk links, if you have them, to those free university courses, and then maybe we can get it out to others.
It's pretty easy if you just go to U of Alberta and put in Indigenous Studies, and the same thing with the University of Toronto website, it pops up pretty easily.
Okay, thank you for that. And I see that we have with us again, Councillors Clumpus and Keveney. And Councillor Clumpus, you have your hand up, so I'm going to acknowledge you next.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. I just wanted to say a huge thank you to our OPP detachment and all of the ancillary partners that they are working with. We had a very successful, I guess, drug bust recently that has been worrisome to many of our rural residents with regard to cannabis, illegal cannabis growing. And the, the effort that was mounted was significant. There were a number of partners in that. And I just want to extend my congratulations and my thanks because it has been a very worrisome situation, but is now resolved with seven arrests and perhaps a strong message going out to the rest of that community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Clumpus. Councillor Keveney, I did think that I saw your hand before you disconnected. Did you still want to add something?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and good morning to you and County Council. And I was just going to add that on July 1st, the Chamber of Commerce presented their annual Business and Volunteer Awards, and the Rotary presented their Citizen of the Year. And I was just going to share from that, that Nellie Kreb from our local food bank won the Rotary Citizen of the Year, and our food bank, like I know all of yours and your own communities, has just done an outstanding job this past year of meeting the needs of the community. And our Business Owner of the Year, as I've mentioned before at County Council, was Ashil Sache, who has been the leader in providing meals to those in need over the period of the pandemic, and that's ongoing. So just wanted to share those two pieces of good news this morning.
Thank you very much, Councillor Keveney. I do not see any other hands from councillors. So with that said, perhaps I can turn over to Randy. I understand that you have some news.
Great, thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. So I'm excited to share some staffing announcements that have recently occurred within the Planning Department. And the first update is with respect to Scott Taylor, and I know Scott's, Scott's on the meeting with us here today. Scott's title will be changing from Senior Planner to Manager of Planning Services. This title change just better reflects the role the Senior Planner has played from a planning department perspective, and also recognizes Scott's contributions to, not only with, within the Plan Department, but the corporation as a whole. I cannot thank Scott enough for his work ethic, his dedication to the county, his volunteer work with the Ontario Professional Planners Institute and the Canadian Institute of Planners, and for continually bringing forward new ideas and strategies that have benefited both the Plan Department and corporately. So I want to congratulate Scott on this new title change. And then the second update is that I'm pleased to announce that we have filled the Planner position vacancy, and the person we have hired is Becky Hillier, and Becky has also joined this council session today, so we can introduce Becky to, to council. So Becky started her planner role on June 14th, and she has been a fantastic addition to our team. She comes to us with a wealth of planning experience, both internationally and locally. She holds a bachelor's degree in international development from the University of Toronto, a master's degree in participation, power, and social change from the Institute of Development Studies in the UK, and a master's of urban and regional planning from Stellenbosch University in South Africa. Most recently, Becky was the Development Coordinator at the City of On Sound, and I apologize to the city councillors for stealing her away. And prior to the city, she was planner with Arc Town Planners and a land use researcher in South Africa. Becky has, as I mentioned, joined the virtual council meeting today, so we wanted to introduce Becky to council, as I'm sure she'll be presenting reports to council at some point in the future. So welcome, Becky, and thanks for being a part of the county team. I don't know if you want to say hi, Becky is.
Yes, thank you so much, Randy. I am really, really excited to be here with all of you. Ever since I started working with the county, I've only heard really, really great things from everyone, both partners that the county works with and, and other departments within the county. I've heard just how progressive the county works and thinks, and I've been really impressed just, yeah, with the management of the department and, and the support from all of my colleagues, so I'm very excited to be joining all of you.
Thanks, Becky. And I apologize, I forgot to give Scott an opportunity. I don't know if he wanted to say a few words.
Yeah, thank you, Randy, for your kind words, and, and thank you, Warden, and members of council for your ongoing support in, in, in what I've done over the years and, and working as a team with, with all of you and staff across the county. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott. And the third update is that I'm pleased to announce that we've hired someone to assist with finalizing our climate change action plan and to start implementing the plan, not only within the corporation, but also working closely with local municipalities and other key stakeholders to move forward with climate change initiatives. So the person we have hired is Linda Swanson, and we are really fortunate to have someone with Linda's experience and knowledge regarding climate change that will no doubt truly benefit the county as a whole. Linda's most recent position has been with the City of Toronto as the Manager of Policy and Research in the Environment and Energy Division, where she has been developing and overseeing the implementation of Toronto's Climate Change Action Plan, which has been branded as Transform TO. Linda has a Bachelor in Environmental Studies in Environment and Resource Studies, and also has a Master's of Global Environmental Governance, both from the University of Waterloo. As part of her master's degree, her studies and publications included sustainable agriculture. So this knowledge and research regarding sustainable agriculture will no doubt be an asset for Gray County, just given the importance of agriculture in Gray County. Linda's climate work has also focused around building strong relationships with internal and external collaborators, as well as building capacity and knowledge through various engagement programs. So these skills will be key to coordinate climate change initiatives throughout the county to create alignment and common vision to reduce our collective greenhouse gas emissions. Based on Linda's previous experience and knowledge, the title for her contract position will be Manager Climate Change Initiatives. And Linda starts on July 26th, and we really look forward to having her part of the county team as well. So thank you for allowing me to announce these exciting new staff announcements and for your time this morning, Council. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, Randy, and I too offer my congratulations to Scott, Becky, and indeed Linda when she joins us. Okay, I think that's it for good news and celebrations. We're going to be moving to adjournment, but before we do, perhaps I need to go back to item 5A. I had Councillor Gamble as the seconder on that item, and he's not here, so I do need someone to second this. So Councillor Burley, perhaps you can be the seconder on that item? Madam Clerk, am I good to go without voting?
Yes, I apologize for that oversight, and thank you, Councillor Patterson, for picking that up.
Sure. Okay, last item, adjournment moved by Councillor Burley, seconded by Councillor Desai. We adjourn. Anyone opposed? So none. That's Carrie. Thank you very much. We'll take a second to flip over Committee of the Whole. You can keep the recording going, Olivia. Okay, returning our attention now to Committee of the Whole. I want to call this meeting to order. Is there any declaration of interest, councillor Mill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, and I apologize for my eagerness in the previous meeting, but I will be declaring an interest in report PDR-CW-16-20. Which is the Wilder Lake subdivision planning report and the nature of the declaration of interest is the developer is a family member.
Thanks very much for that. Is there any other declaration of interest, the Keneary or otherwise? I see none. If one should arise during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. Item three, business arising from the minutes. Item 3A is notice provided by councillor O'Leary. At our meeting held on June 24th, councillor O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, county council. I won't read this over again. You've all read it. The only thing I have to add is I I don't want to miss. An opportunity and that's all. I just want staff to look into it. And certainly don't want to be in the position two or three years down the road, looking back saying we should have looked at that building. When it became available. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Excellent. And I would just say it's moved by councillor O'Leary and seconded by councillor Desai. Any comments on the motion before us, councillor Desai?
Thank you, Warden. Thanks. Just some clarity is what I'm seeking here. The motion itself says that the. Whereas Mapleview Long Term Care Home owned by Southbridge is currently up for sale with closing date of mid 2022. My question is, has it been sold already? And and what's, if I could just get a brief update on that situation and how that allows us to. To look into options for affordable housing, because I do agree with the sentiment that we do need more affordable houses.
Councillor O'Leary?
I'll defer to Kim if I could on that.
Good morning, council. So Southbridge is the long-term care provider that's currently building a significant new. Home here in Owen Sound. And so they own two. Long-term care facilities, smaller ones in Owen Sound, Mapleview and Georgian Heights. And so in anticipation of of moving their residents into the new home. They have put the existing two properties on the on the market. Which is why this opportunity is available to us to investigate. And also why the closing date is so long, because that's when their new building is anticipated to be ready for occupancy.
So just, if I may have a follow-up, so I I'm thinking that's a mistake on my part where I've assumed the closing date to be. The closing of a sale rather than the closing of the facility.
It's actually both. When I spoke to the to the Realtor. About, you know, what it was that Southbridge was looking for. That's what was, that's the information that was provided to me was that they would be looking to close. A sale if that was something that we decided to do in mid 2022.
Okay, thank you very much, Warden.
Councillor Soever, you're next.
And and I think this is a great opportunity to certainly explore. What the the two homes are closing and in fact Georgian Heights seems to be the bigger home with forty beds versus Mapleview with twenty-nine. So. Why wouldn't we look at both properties in terms of potential?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I think one of the primary considerations with the Mapleview property is its location. The proximity to the downtown. What the neighboring area. What the composition of that neighboring area is. Access to amenities and such, I think made Mapleview. Seem like perhaps a more attractive option. If I'm being very candid with council, the Georgian Heights property backs onto Georgian College. And it may be that there's an opportunity there. For something to to facilitate at the college. But that's certainly by no means, that may be as as Anne Marie works, works through developing the report. We need a lot more information, which is why we're grateful that you're allowing us to take some time and investigate this. Certainly, councillor Soever, we wouldn't discount that if if it turned out that that made more sense.
Kim, while we're at it, do we know much about the condition of each of these facilities, like Mapleview versus Georgian Heights?
Given the COVID considerations and the fact that we needed to speak with you. We have not been in either of these buildings. Certainly, every long-term care home is is held to. A high standard, as we know from our own. And so, I mean, I I expect that what we would find would be similar to. What we would have in our own properties of a similar age.
Okay, anyone else with discussion on this item? If not, then I will call the question on the motion before you. Is there, oh, sorry, councillor Mackey, I see your hand, sorry.
Thanks, Warden, and through you to to Kim. Just wondering, Kim, what sort of external resources will be required to evaluate this facility? I know Colliers is looking at or had looked at Rockwood Terrace and the determination was made that. You know, retrofitting it probably didn't make sense. So I'm just wondering, how will we evaluate this Mapleview?
And Mary has her hand up.
So certainly, thank you, councillor Mackey. I think that we have not been in it, as Kim said, so we would certainly look at getting an external source. In to have a look and just to see if it is a viable candidate or a viable option for either affordable or. Possibly supportive housing. So I think with council's indulgence, maybe that there would be two options to our report. Looking at accessing the viability to begin with for whether it's affordable or supportive. And recognizing that there is a large continuum of housing needs across Gray County. Maybe determining, I mean, we don't actually have a role in supportive housing. But looking at working with our community partners to assess if there is a possibility of supportive housing at that site. I think determining what the county's role would be in that through the report too. Whether it's supportive, whether it's helping with development, advocacy. You know, there's there's lots of things we could. Ideas that we could bring back in that report with regards to options for that that part of land, parcel of land.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Anything else from anyone else? I don't see any other hands waving at me. If that is the case, then I'm going to call the question on the motion before you for staff to bring back a report. Does anyone oppose to that? Seeing one, that is Carrie. Very much. We'll move on to item 3B. It is a notice of motion provided by councillors Soever. And it is moved by councillors Soever and seconded by councillor Desai. Councillor Soever, you have the floor. You're muted, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm bringing this motion because. Gray County, as the motion says, has a collaborative decision-making framework and. You know, in in reviewing this framework, it's quite a comprehensive and it's a really good document. Which tells us how to deal with. These matters where collaboration is required with either municipalities or other partners. And so this was passed in March 2013. So it does refer to committees that no longer exist. But and have been replaced by the committee of the whole. And it was confirmed by the bylaw, the confirmation bylaw at the end of that year. Which says that every resolution will have the same force and effect. As each and every one of them had been the subject matter of a separate bylaw duly enacted. So. Although it was passed by resolution, it has been confirmed to have the same force and effect as the bylaw. So. The framework, as the, as my resolution says. Is a means of formalizing the terms of engagement between two or more municipal organizations wishing to work together. To explore ways to improve the delivery of one or more services to tackle a new. A shared new service challenge. And I think everybody will agree that the investment in the Wireton Keppel International Airport is clearly one such undertaking. And. So what I'm asking is that staff be directed to follow. The steps in the collaborative decision-making framework for considering the merits of an investment in the Wireton Keppel Airport. So. If I could ask the madam clerk to just put up the graphic which deals with the. Framework, as I can just kind of introduce the framework to those on council who might be unfamiliar with it. So basically, there's four steps. Step one is getting started. Which is to receive a written request for the service review. And it does note there on the in the paragraph on the text that it should have some substantiating information which. And the request is supposed to be submitted to the RCAO. And then, you know, goes on that she'll acknowledge it, et cetera. And then we were to get a prelim, we would get a preliminary report. Which would be considered the Corporate Services Committee, which is now, I guess it would go to the Cow, Committee of the Whole. And it is just a very preliminary report. Talk with the preliminary considerations, the advantages, disadvantages. Financial resource and service implications, et cetera. Then from there it goes to county council, which considers the committee recommendation. And then council would endorse in principle and seek commitment. To participate from the other parties deemed necessary. So I think that's where we got to with the Wireton Airport. At our last meeting, we kind of floundered around on that, but we we did get to that conclusion. And then. But we we already had spent money on a consultant's report, which this process is designed. To avoid that unnecessary spending of money until there is a clear direction on which way we are going. So. We can go to the next page, which is step two. So step two is the important part, which is the project charter. And so what it says is the county CAO will engage municipal CAOs and others as necessary. To prepare a draft project charter. The charter will set out the terms of engagement. Including operating principles, objectives and constraints of the review, et cetera. And I think this is very important because. At this point, one of the things that was missing in in the report we got last time was. You know, there was a talk of a great expansion of the airport and but certainly nobody had yet secured the necessary. Sewer treatment facilities in which would require conversation with South Bruce and Bruce. So. And then the draft process, the charter is considered by the partners, the respective councillors, councils. Which makes this a true collaborative project. And then the county council adopts the project charter. And then the county establishes a steering committee. They talk about the Corporate Services Committee, but. Certainly that would be a steering committee of members of of the committee of the whole. And the CAO's group from the affected municipalities would serve as a technical advisory group. And and certainly, you know, we have a lot of expertise in our CAOs throughout the county. And so that does negate the need for expensive consultants early on. Then the next state, so but but that's great. So now you know, now you would know where we're going. And then there's an analysis of the current state, which is step three. So basically. Taking all the factors that are considered in the project charter, we would then. Get a report on, okay, what do we have there now? What what is the situation there? Like, what is the sewer and water? What is the surrounding land area? A lot of these things were covered in the consultant's report. But this comes before the report. And and so you get a final report on the current state, which is endorsed by. The steering committee and recommended to the councils and boards that are relevant. And then you go to the big report at the end, which is what are we really trying to achieve? And and I think this is important. So this is like the full feasibility study. Where you take all the information, you know which partners are interested. Who's going to benefit, who's going to contribute money? You know, where your sewer and water capacity is. You know, all of that detailed information that you really need to make an informed decision. Because I think we all want to make informed decision. And so when you look at all this, I think this is a great framework because it is detailed. And it provides a lot of good direction. And it it negates rushing into things by getting consultant's reports. Before we really know which partners are involved and before we actually tap into. The expertise we have throughout the county. And so that's why I'm suggesting that we we just follow this rigorously. So we can come to the best answer possible on this major decision for us on the Wireton Keppel Airport. And thank you, that's all I have to say.
Councillor Soever, anyone else to speak on this item? Councillor Potter?
Thank you. And I just wanted to add that so we need a standard. By which we measure these decisions of this of this magnitude. I don't know whether this is a good thing or not. It has its merits, of course. But it needs to be studied a lot more thoroughly than it has to date. And that's really what I would want to see. We we have our our forerunners at this council. Have come up with this way of dealing with these difficult decisions. And I think we should respect that, but I think it also gives us something to measure all our decisions against. Instead of making them on the fly. To suit whatever strikes us at the time. I think we have to have standards. And this framework gives us those standards.
Thank you, sir. Councillor O'Leary, I think I saw your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm interested in what our CEO has to say about this, but. Through you to councillors Soever, I just wanted, right at the start there, you were talking about spending. Money on consultant. Our CEO was directed by council to hire the consultant, which she not. But so I'm just, can you just be clear on, are you saying that we shouldn't have hired a consultant at the time or?
Well, thank you for that. And and I'm not being critical at all of our CEO. We did direct her to do that. And and we got a report which which was called a feasibility study, but really doesn't reach those standards. But the. You know, my concern is that we are rushing into and and not and not our CEO because we direct her. So we have to take. Take responsibility as a council for this. Is we we are tending, as councillor Potter said, rushing into these things. And without, you know, following this framework, which is, you know, been established and endorsed by council. And it's not been rescinded. And so. When you look at how this framework works, it it doesn't want a detailed report at the beginning. It first asked for the collaboration part, because that's what it's called, the collaboration framework. To to come first and a project charter. So you actually define the project. That you're approving for the report to be written on. And. So you line up your partners, you define the project through the project part charter, and then you go to hiring a consultant. But. You know. And I think that is a much more efficient way of spending our taxpayers' dollars than than rushing into a report. Before you know what collaboration we have.
You're on mute, Mr. Warden. Sorry, councillor O'Leary, anything else?
No, thank you.
Councillor Burley?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I fully support councillor Soever's motion. And I think it's a great guideline that we should be following and I hundred percent support it. And I think it's a great guideline that we should be following, and I 100% support it.
Thank you, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And sorry, I wasn't able to, well, I'm not sure if I'm sorry, but I wasn't able to attend you know, that council meeting. But I did see, you know, I certainly watched it the next day, and I did see how, you know, council struggled with this process. And I think him, you know, maybe alluded to the fact that there should have been more discussion before we got to the point that we had at that last meeting. So if there's a process out there that may assist us moving forward, so we don't stumble again this way, or flounder maybe is a better way to put it, then I would be in full support of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam C A O.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. A few things. First of all, we have been talking about, from an economic development point of view, about trying to support the growth and success of the Wyreton Keppel Airport since 2017. We talked about a relationship with Think Canada. We've talked about foreign direct investment. This has been an ongoing conversation at this table for a number of years. Certainly, it's part of the Economic Development Department's mandate to work with all of our member municipalities to try and assist them to make the most of the assets in their community. I think where this particular project differs from others that we've seen in the past was the understanding of staff that Georgian Bluffs had reached their limit in their ability to continue to carry the load for Wyreton Keppel solely on their own. And the recommendation that was made to council was in no way meant to require Gray County Council to take an ownership position in the airport. We weren't asking to start to run the airport as a service. The collaborative framework is meant to be used when a municipality has approached the county to look at a new or enhanced level of service, similar to what we've talked about with solid waste management. So at this time, where we are, you determined at your last meeting that you were not supportive of undertaking any financial contribution towards the Wyreton Keppel Airport. And what we have is now a discussion about whether or not economic development can continue to do their work, working with our neighboring municipalities in South Bruce Peninsula and at the County of Bruce, and the private sector to continue to do their job and work towards some further investment opportunities that might make that airport a more viable proposition and to see it achieve some of the potential that the consultant recognized in their report. I don't believe that the collaborative framework as it stands is something that we want to go through every time we want to look at an economic development opportunity. I see those two things as quite different from one another, and both have their place. So I will leave it with you there. I think we've come to some, we've come some way down the road, and there is a report coming back with the results of further conversations with our neighbors regarding their interest in working with us on the airport. So you can expect that shortly. Thanks.
You're on mute, Mr. Warden. Doing that to myself, I apologize. Counselors, whoever.
Yes, thank you for that, Madam C A O. And I would respectfully disagree in that I'm reading from the collaborative framework. And it's to consider the merits of delivering a new service or a new collaborative engagement with local municipalities. So I think the, you know, funding the airport to me, and then doing the studies necessary to to move it forward as an economic development opportunity clearly falls within a new collaborative engagement with local municipalities. And I'm all for that if it makes sense. And what all I'm saying is we should follow the collaborative decision-making framework. And I know, you know, we've had a discussion before where, you know, the Committee of the Whole meeting previously stated it's just a framework. It's a roadmap, not a formal policy or procedure, nor was it adopted by bylaw. And I would disagree with that as well, in that it was adopted by resolution, which was confirmed by the confirmation bylaw. So I just, I'm not saying that, you know, we shouldn't proceed with the airport or economic development. But when we are asked for over 300, well, $350,000 of funding, which is just the start to investing in what it's needed to grow that airport. I mean, that's a major economic decision, and we have these rules and policies, and I think we should follow them. And I think it would make it a lot easier, rather than creating more work. I think the framework is designed to create less work in that you find out who your partners are, how invested they are, and how committed they are. And then you develop a project charter, which defines your roadmap going forward before you spend all this money and commit to spending the money. So I think, you know, it could be a great economic development opportunity. And I applaud staff for bringing it forward. But I just think if we have rules, we should either follow them or if we choose not to follow them, we should formally rescind them.
Thank you. Anyone else? I do not see anyone else, so maybe it's time to call the question on the motion before us. Is there anyone opposed to the motion? I do not see any hands. So with that said, I'm going to say it's carried. Okay, we're going to move on to item number four. And looking at the consent agenda, counsel, is there anything that needs to be upheld there? Counselor Columbus.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to poll number seven, which is the municipality Miford Resolution Letter for discussion.
Thank you. Anything else? I do not see anything else. And that being said, it's moved by Counselor, so ever, and, oh, sorry. Consent agenda has been moved by Counselor Columbus and seconded by Counselor O'Leary. Is there anyone opposed to that? Say that that too is carried. Okay, we have been sitting for an hour, so I'm going to suggest that we take a 10-minute break. So require us to come back at 10:40. Sure. I'll see you then. If you could mute and stop video. We'll wait for the clock to turn to 10:40. There we go. Do we have quorum?
Just.
Okay, we'll give it maybe.
There we go.
Okay, excellent. We're there. Okay, so we're back and we're dealing now with item 6A, the 10-year capital forecast that puts Mary Lou on deck. This item's been moved by Counselor Keveney and seconded by Counselor Patterson. Mary Lou, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So Report F R C W 1921 is the 2020-22 to 2031 10-year capital forecast. It is a collaborative effort between the asset-owning departments and finance. And I'd like to thank staff who developed budget numbers, the finance team, and Matt Taylor. and Matt Taylor from our IT department for the capital project module that is an in-house software application. Each year, Matt makes tweaks and enhancements that he and/or users of the module suggest, and the end product is a great reference tool. The document itself is fourteen hundred and thirty pages, contains summary sheets. So there's a corporate summary as well as summaries for each of the four functions of corporate services, planning, community development, social services, and transportation and public safety. It is further broken down into departmental summaries accompanied by project sheets. In two thousand twenty-two, the draft forecast shows a levy requirement of nineteen million two hundred seventy-one thousand three hundred dollars. And this is one million four hundred sixty thousand six hundred higher than the two thousand twenty-one approved budget. It represents two point three nine percent levy increase. In April, the asset management strategy from Public Sector Digest was presented, and it recommended a one point two one percent levy increase over a fifteen-year phase-in period to achieve full funding for Gray County's infrastructure program. This has been incorporated into the transportation services, construction, resurfacing, and minor capital budget in addition to taking into account inflationary increases. The two point three nine percent levy increase also includes the annual one percent contribution to the Affordable Housing Reserve to fund future projects. This was approved by council during the two thousand twenty-one budget process. And just as a reference, the two thousand twenty-one corporate levy for operating a capital is sixty-two million three hundred forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. And a one percent tax increase equaled six hundred and ten dollars, six hundred and ten thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars. The asset management plan is scheduled to be presented later this year and will be based on data collected in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. With council's approval, the first year of the forecast will be used to prepare in the two thousand twenty-two county budget. It's a living document. Future years in the forecast are reviewed annually. Adjustments to costs and project timing are made as necessary. And staff in the preparation of the ten-year capital forecast has used a number of resources, including building condition assessments, including the one that is just finalizing with Walter Fady, pavement condition analysis, structure assessments, asset lifecycle history, and staff best knowledge in order to prepare this forecast. The motion in the report also recommends that staff be authorized to procure up to fifty percent of the gross expenditures contained in the first year of the capital forecast with approved council resolution. And by doing this, it allows staff to issue and award tenders for some capital work in advance of the approval of the two thousand twenty-two budget to get an early start on some projects or purchase equipment that requires a significant lead time. The net levy requirement of nineteen million two hundred seventy-one thousand three hundred dollars is the result of considering project expenses, transfers to and from reserve, government funding, as well as any partner contributions. For long-term care redevelopment, for the purpose of this for, purpose of this forecast, the investment required for Rockwood Terrace and Gray Gables is shown at the current one million three hundred and sixty-one thousand transfer to reserve. This will be updated upon council approval of project costs and terms in conjunction with the redevelopment agreement with the province. Table one in the report is a high-level summary showing the funding required by function and department. Table two provides a list of notable items from the first three years of the forecast. It identifies projects that are new, project timing that has changed from the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand thirty plan, or there were significant budget adjustments that have been made. And now we will move into the forecast unless there are questions. And what I will do is lead off, and I will turn it over to departments who will then discuss their portion of the forecast. And we will take any questions as we move through each department's portion.
Okay, so council, any questions so far? All right, continue then, Mary Lou.
And going to share my screen. Okay, and can you see the ten-year capital forecast?
No.
We can, Mary Lou.
What? No, not. Now we can, yes.
Okay, it was just a delay, sorry.
No worries.
Okay. Okay, so as I've mentioned, the proposed net levy requirement is nineteen million two hundred seventy-one thousand three hundred dollars. This chart shows the breakdown by each function. We will start with corporate services. The corporate services net levy requirement is one million ninety-five thousand dollars, an increase of fifty-one thousand four hundred dollars or four point nine three percent from the two thousand twenty-one approved budget. Make this a little bigger. And we're going, with clerk and council services, there is a twenty thousand dollar annual contribution to reserve that funds the replacement of electronic manage, electronic records management system that is expected to occur in two thousand twenty-six. And for communications. The net levy requirement for this budget is thirteen thousand three hundred dollars in two thousand twenty-two. There are two project sheets. The first is a contribution of thirty-eight hundred dollars to reserve for audiovisual upgrades in the council chambers that is scheduled to be required in two thousand twenty-six. And the second project is six thousand dollar transfer to reserve that will provide funding for the update of the corporate communication strategy in two thousand twenty-five. For the finance department, there is one project for two thousand twenty-two, and that is multi-user budgeting software. The project cost is seventy-two thousand eight hundred dollars, and it's shown as funded from the one-time funding reserve. This will be a valuable process enhancement for staff in all departments. So the current process is a combination of Word and Excel documents and a software would automate processes, create efficiencies, and will provide staff and departments with the ability to update budget numbers and see the impact of adjustments in real time. Next, we move into the human resources budget, and I will turn this over to Jennifer Morrow.
Good morning, Warden Hicks and members of council. I'm going to take you through our capital projects that we have forecasted for the human resources department. The human resources department completed a service review in the fall of two thousand twenty, and our capital projects are in line with that service review. They're very much focused on modernization of software systems to create capacity and efficiency within the human resources team. Our current HRIS system that we use is scheduled to be stale-dated this year, and we are working on creating an RFP for a new HRIS system for two thousand twenty-two. That is our first capital project. We've been putting money in reserve to achieve this for many years, and it will be fully funded in two thousand twenty-two, the year we hope to complete this project. In the following year, in two thousand twenty-three, we have scheduled for a scheduling replacement software. We are very hopeful. The research that I've conducted so far leads us to believe that we can achieve both an HRIS and scheduling by purchasing a human capital management system. So I'm hopeful that I have some good news in two thousand twenty-two, and I can come back to council and say that our scheduling software scheduled for two thousand twenty-three is not needed. We won't know that until we go through the full RFP process. So we have still allocate, allocated monies for that. In two thousand twenty, sorry, just gonna check my notes here. In two thousand twenty-three, we are working towards a job evaluation and market salary review. It's been many years since we've completed that for non-union staff, and we've fallen a bit behind. But we are hopeful to achieve this project in two thousand twenty-three and review all of our non-union jobs for market equity, internal equity, and pay equity. We have been maintaining pay equity since we have done our last review, which was about ten years ago. So we haven't fallen behind with pay equity. But we do feel that there are some needs for market equity and also internal equity to review all of our non-union jobs against our comparators. Following that, we just have one more project, and that is our safety data sheets in two thousand twenty-four. So currently, we use a paper-based product, project system to review and categorize our MSDS or our WHMS related products, products within the county. And we think that we can achieve some efficiencies and also reduce some hazards if we modernize that and have a digital system. So that is, sorry, through you, Warden, to Counselor Milne.
Thank you, Jennifer. I'm just in regards to your previous ask there, I guess you'll call it, I'll call it. You, you described market review with our comparators. Have our comparators changed significantly in the past? You, I think you said it was ten years since we've done this. Would they have changed any? And I remember at the time, I think there were no private industry comparators in there as well. And I'm just wondering, would it be useful to have some private industry comparators in there? Just so we get a clearer picture or maybe a leveler field of the comparators?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Our fourteen comparators, we compare to fourteen upper-tier municipalities, and a review will be done in the year that we do the project to make sure that they are still appropriate, that they are the right size, that we haven't grown beyond them, or they haven't grown beyond that. So when we put out the RFP to market, we will have that as one of the indicators, and there is a review of those comparators. We have been traditionally using those fourteen comparators within the tenure, but it is a good time to check if they are still appropriate. Within the RFP as well, we will put in a notation that asks if it is recommended that you use any private industry comparators. I know in the past when we've done some market reviews for such positions as treasurer, we might look to other public sectors that aren't municipal, so healthcare or education, those tend to be the types of folks that have like skills, knowledge, and ability as municipalities. But we will put in a notation if council wishes looking for advice on private sector comparators. The difference with private sector comparators is they are normally for profit, which doesn't always make a good comparator for us because we cannot just randomly make more money to achieve the types of salaries and bonuses and benefits that a private sector employer can. But we will, we can add a notation into that RFP if council thinks it's appropriate.
Thank you, and I do think it is at least appropriate in the sense that it gives us some context. Whether we use those numbers or not, it does give us some context to see what's going on in the broader community in terms of compensation. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Milne. Madam CIO.
I'm sorry, and I would only add to the comments that Jen has made in that there's some, there are some positions which we can find good examples of in the private sector, but many of the, many of the positions that we have are somewhat unique or specialized to the public sector or to the municipal sector, and we might not be able to find like-for-like there, but where we can, I agree that we should have a look at that as well. So thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, council. So, Everett, did you have something to add? I was gonna say no, so perhaps yes. You're muted, sir.
No, I didn't have my hand up. I just put it up now, but.
Oh, well, do you want to, do you want to ask a question now?
No, no, no.
Okay. My apologies. Okay, Mary Lou, back to you. Or are we still with Jennifer, sorry?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I will just complete a very short synopsis of the last project that I have not covered. It is a health and safety project, and it is job hazard and demands analysis. And we complete this every five or six years as best practice to ensure that we have analyzed and kept on track of the hazards that our staff have as they go about their day-to-day duties. It is something that is recommended under the Occupational Health and Safety Act and part of the internal responsibility system of leaders and staff members is to identify those hazards and, where possible, reduce those hazards. And that is our final project within the human resources department in our ten-year capital plan.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Mary Lou, we're back to you.
Yeah. Now we move on to information technology, and I'll ask Jody McCackren to speak to this forecast.
Thank you, Mary Lou. So our IT capital projects are pretty much a continuation of the budgets we've put forward in the most recent years and are mostly made up of like lifecycle management for the hardware that makes up our network. We have ten thousand and twelve thousand for uninterruptible power supply UPSs and photocopiers respectively next year. And again, those are things like most of the, of the equipment on our network. We're looking at either five or seven years replacement for that equipment. We also have ten thousand set aside to do some security audits, followed by fifty thousand in two thousand twenty-three for a full audit. So the money we're requesting for next year will go into smaller aspects of reviewing some of our systems and just looking at the things, in particular, those applications that are public-facing and can be scanned from outside the county network, just to make sure that they're secure. I'd just like to highlight two projects into two thousand twenty-three. We have our main server infrastructure up for replacement in two thousand twenty-three. That is one of the largest projects that we take on, and that is for three hundred eighty-six thousand. And we also have the phone system for major worker replacements in two thousand twenty-three at three hundred twenty-four thousand. I would just like to point out that we're currently working with Nielsen IT consultants reviewing our phone system. They are providing us with an analysis of the sort of the functionality that our phone system has and what the the market currently offers for technology and telephony, and they're going to make some recommendations in terms of, I guess, a roadmap in investment for time and money and what our phone system should look like in the future. So that project in two thousand twenty-three may change based on their recommendations, but I did just want to point that out. And those are the projects Friday.
Thank you. Mary Lou.
I see Counselor Milne, Mr. Warden.
That's right, Councilwoman Milne, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Jody, when, when was the last time the telephone system was upgraded or replaced, for that matter?
The telephone system, we put in sort of voice-over-internet phone system like we have now, moving away from analog lines back in two thousand and nine. And we have simply invested in maintaining that technology ever since. So we've never swapped out the technology that we use. We've replaced components as they failed, essentially, but we've never, until this year, we've never done a major upgrade. This year, we've replaced some of the equipment that we saw as necessary to prolong that system even for a few years. But essentially, it is still the system that we put in in two thousand and one.
So the upgrade that may happen in two thousand twenty-three, will that be to a new technology? Or is that simply a continuation of the voice-over internet?
It will, it will still be voice-over internet. The technology itself is unlikely to change, although one thing we are considering is moving it all to the cloud, which would give us that added element of resilience. So if we do have problems with the county data center, if we have power outages or anything like that, as long as another site can connect to the internet, they would continue to have telephones. So it is kind of common practice now to take some of those systems and move them off your own network for that reason. But again, I am still kind of leaning on the advice we're getting from our consultants to see what they recommend.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Potter. You're next.
Thank you, Ms. Warden, and through you.
Thank you, Ms. Warden, and through you to Jody. I'm looking at the photocopier, replacement of photocopiers lines. And it just always strikes me that the age we're living in, we, we probably shouldn't need photocopiers as much as we use them. Is there any thought to to maybe gently reminding people that they don't really need to copy as many things as they do and you know, reducing that cost because it is substantial. It would pay for, it would pay for a lot of housing, for example. So I just I'm wondering why we don't look at some options there and really study whether we need to spend as much money in the coming years.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Warden, I will say in some ways, you're preaching to the choir. IT is never a fan of printing, but we support it nonetheless. I think some of the things we've done this year in response to the pandemic in particular, and some of the projects that other departments are looking at, will have an impact on how much we print. In response to the pandemic, just with everybody being home and off-site, we've had to do a lot more electronically. So we were forced into reducing our printers, and we are seeing that in terms of the operational costs and running them in terms of how much we're actually using. Other projects are, Social Services has moved a lot of their documentation electronically. Finance is looking at some of their projects, which would deal more with electronic invoicing, and that's sort of incidental to, to what they put in for, for projects in terms of looking at budgeting. It's just features that are in some of the software applications that are looking at. And I believe that, you know, the, the project that Jen or Noel mentioned about essentially replacing their, their human resources system would, would also digitize a lot of that. So there are projects on the horizon that would further reduce how much we pay. Also, the last time we replaced a lot of printers, starting two years ago, we certainly reduced the number of printers we've supported, so it's more centralized. And we are getting better rates. So it's still a lot of money. I personally would like to see it come down and do more electronically, but we are also making good progress.
Very good. Are you finished, Jody?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, back to Mary Lou, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Now we'll move on to general administration. And this portion of the forecast does not have a levy requirement. Building condition assessments were undertaken in two thousand and twenty, and final reports just starting to be finalized. The next scheduled refresh of the building condition assessments is two thousand and twenty-five, and it's funded from federal gas tax. You'll note in the housing budget, there is BCA funding in that as well. We cannot fund the housing building condition assessments from gas tax. The next project is update of the corporate strategic plan. The next scheduled update is two thousand and twenty-three, and it's funded from the strategic plan reserve. It is anticipated council will wish to undertake a refresh that will include internal and external consultation. And now we'll move into the property budget, and I'll turn it over to Anne Marie Shaw.
Thank you, Mary Lou. As noted in our property budget, we have our debenture payments, our self-financed debenture. And we have a tractor that needs replacing at our administration building. And moving down a little bit further, there is a HVAC system. So we did receive some safe restart funding in which we are able to fund our air HVAC systems through, so that we have moved up. We were scheduled to do a couple of HVACs over the next few years, and we're putting them all into next year to take advantage of the provincial funding. That's it for property.
Next, we'll move into planning community development. The overall summary for this function has a net levy requirement of six hundred and eight thousand dollars, an increase of thirty-six thousand two hundred or six point three three percent over two thousand and twenty-one. And I'm going to ask Randy to speak to the planning and development and trails portion.
Great. Thanks, Mary Lou. With respect to the planning capital budgets, there are two new studies that we're recommending in the capital program. These would address some of the study commitments identified in Recolor Gray, the, the county's official plan. The first study we're proposing is the Bedrock and Shale Resource Study. This, and we're proposing to complete this in two thousand and twenty-two. Back in two thousand and four, the county completed an aggregate resource cemetery master plan. And this was to identify aggregate resource areas which are mapped on Schedule B of the county official plan. The, the plan identified certain resource areas for protection such that they would be available for future extraction. However, that plan only identified sand and gravel deposits. Therefore, a similar county-wide mapping exercise has not been undertaken for the Bedrock and Shale resource areas. The province has provided some mapping for, for Bedrock and Shale resource areas, and this mapping was included as part of the most recent version of the official plan as part of Appendix E. However, the county has not analyzed constraints to these resource areas in detail like what was done for the sand and gravel deposits. So it's recommended that a study be undertaken to better analyze this mapping data provided by the province. This will help to clarify policies and more accurate mapping that be, that can be considered for a future official plan amendment. We are estimating the study will cost seventy-five thousand dollars. And we are proposing that this be funded from both the planning stays reserve and the development charges reserve. The second study is the archaeological management plan. So the county's official plan indicates that the county will undertake an archaeological management plan to identify and conserve the county's archaeological heritage. The updated two thousand and twenty provincial policy statement also indicates that planning authorities should consider and promote archaeological management plans in order to conserve these resources. Staff see this as a great opportunity to partner and engage with indigenous groups and local municipalities to help guide development away from lands that have archaeological significance, assist local municipalities when reviewing development applications, and just provide digital map areas of these areas and known archaeological sites. The proposal is to complete this study in two thousand and twenty-four, and we're estimating this cost will be fifty thousand, which will also require some use of existing staff resources. The proposal is to fund this project from, from reserves. So in total, we are not proposing an increase to the net levy requirements for the planning capital budget, other than a slight cost of inflation each year. So that's the planning, and I'll just go into the trails capital next, unless there's any questions for those. Okay, in terms of the trails capital budget, there are a number of new capital projects that staff are proposing associated with the CP rail trail as well as the county forest trails. As councils aware, there continues to be a growing demand for outdoor recreational opportunities for both residents and visitors to our area. And this was especially noted as based on the increased demand that we've seen during the pandemic. By ensuring that Gray County's trail systems are properly designed and well-maintained, it includes benefits such as public health and safety, environmental protection, social benefits, as well as economic and financial benefits, being a direct result of well-designed trail systems. The trail-related capital improvements align with the recommendations contained in both the recreational trails master plan as well as the cycling and trails master plan. So some of the new trail capital projects within county forests include improving and expanding existing parking areas, adding, adding new parking areas, trail improvements, as well as installing amenities such as benches, signage, and even privies in some locations. We have tried to focus on county forests where we see a lot of activity, as well as county forests where we have existing partnerships with clubs such as the Colapore Wilderness Trails Association, the Own Sound Cross Country Ski Club, who uses the Massey Forest, and the Glen Elg Nordic Ski Club. And we want to explore partnership opportunities to assist with ongoing maintenance associated with the parking areas and trails. So just to highlight some of the proposed trail improvements in two thousand and twenty-two, we're proposing parking area and trail improvements within the Colapore County Forest. Total cost for that would be, we're estimating be seventy-eight thousand dollars. Two thousand and twenty-four, we're proposing parking area and trail improvements within the Massey County Forest. In, and then there's other projects in camp all over east and west, Lily Oak, Glen El, Klondike, and Harkway in later years. For the new proposed capital projects associated with the CP rail trail, these include adding parking areas adjacent to the rail trail within settlement areas along the entire rail trail. The proposal is to also improve the CP rail trail crossings where they intersect the provincial highway and county roads. And this will be done through improved signage and other improvements to make both trail users and road users aware of the crossings. So the, in two thousand and twenty-three, we're proposing a parking area south of Gray Road eighteen in Rockford. The estimated cost for that will be fifty-five thousand. In two thousand and twenty-four, we're also proposing to do those rail trail crossing improvements where they intersect Highway ten and various county roads. And then we have other parking additions and improvements along the rail trail, including in Chatsworth, Berkeley, Sealon, and Holland Center. The estimates for the new trail copper projects range anywhere from sixteen thousand to just under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the proposal is to fund these projects from the trail reserve. And the way we have set this up is that an annual levy contribution to the trail reserve is, is provided. And, and so that provides consistency each year and helps avoid fluctuations as the cost of those projects can fluctuate on a year-to-year basis. The two thousand and twenty-one approved budget had the annual levy contribution to the trail reserve at seventy-eight thousand dollars. And the proposal has increased this to a hundred thousand dollars in order to cover the estimated cost for the new trail capital projects. So this results in an increase of twenty-two thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-two. And we are proposing approximately two percent annual inflation each year going forward. A portion of projects will also be funded from the development charge reserve as these trail improvements will not only benefit existing residents and visitors, but also future residents and visitors as a result of growth and development. And as mentioned, we'll also explore partnership opportunities with trail user groups and clubs, and also look for grant funding opportunities to support these projects. And that's the planning and trails proposals.
Thank you. Counselor Millen's got a question.
To Mr. Warden, Randy, two things. One, I'm wondering, have we finished putting stone dust down on the entire length of the CP rail trail? And the other question is regarding the timing of some of these parking area improvements. As we've seen, and many other outdoor recreation areas have seen during the pandemic, the demand has skyrocketed and indications I would think are that that's going to continue. So my concern is that by putting, and I understand the rationale for wanting to level out the levy request, but to push out some of these requests for multiple years, will our maintenance costs from, you know, not enough parking space and, and damage to areas? Will that far outstrip the benefits of leveling off the levy requests? And so in other words, do we need to get these parking improvements in place now? Or at least in the next year or two, rather than waiting for more costs to be incurred from damages?
Through you, Mr. Warden, all great questions. In terms of the first question with respect to the stone dusting and where we're currently at with stone dusting on the CP rail trail, we're approximately just south of Berkeley was the last stone dusting in terms of where we've left off. So we've gone from all the way from Own Sound to south of Berkeley. And we did receive some, some funding to be able to continue on and do more stone dusting this year. Our hope was to be able to have that funding and, and do the remaining part of the CP rail trail. Based on the cost estimates that we received through our tender results, we're able to do majority of it. It gets us down to about, actually, the, the Gray Island, South Gate boundary or close to that, that area. So with that, we will be able to finalize the rest of the, the trail. We're hoping then in next year in two thousand and twenty-two. So that will allow us then basically will have stoned us everywhere from Own Sound to Dundalk. I think it's actually good because we're working with township of South Gate as part of the Dundalk Medical Clinic to do some trail improvements in around the Dundalk area in the next year or two. So I think it's probably good that we're, we're, we're actually ending, so to speak, at the South Gate boundary because we'll do those improvements in Dundalk as well, and then continue with the, the rest of the dust, the stone dusting in between those areas. So I, I think it actually works to the benefit. In terms of your second question, yeah, we tried to balance out the budget. We didn't want to propose a, is a major significant increase in the capital, but I totally understand your comments, and we no doubt have seen a huge increased demand for, for recreational opportunities and outdoor opportunities. So if, if council's direction is to look at bumping up some of these proposed projects, we're more than happy to consider that as part of either updates to this capital plan or as part of our overall budget when we come forward in later on this year. So we, we just wanted to at least flag some of these projects because we want to make sure that we're moving forward with the recommendations in the recreational trails master plan and cycling and trails master plan. And no doubt, we think that these projects are, are exciting. Will allow our trail users and others to just have a better overall experience when it comes to our county forests and CP rail trail. So, and like I said, we're looking for those partnership opportunities as well. So if there's funding opportunities that come along, we'll be able to bump these up for sure. But if council also wants us to look at putting some more focus on some of these projects, we're happy to consider that as well. Thank you very much.
Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden, and through you to Randy. Randy, has any consideration been given to parking passes or you know, some certain user fees for some of our properties? Gray Sawall has certainly been utilizing parking passes, and it's a good revenue generation, and that money goes back into the upgrades of those facilities.
Thank you. And through, through you, Mr. Warden, another great question. It is something that we have been discussing internally is looking at, you know, as we create these, these new parking opportunities, there's going to be ongoing operating and maintenance costs associated with these. And that's something that we're wanting to address as part of the operating budgets as, as we bring these online. As I mentioned, we're hoping that we'll be able to do some partnership opportunities, especially where we've got those relationships with existing clubs. But there may be some opportunities for parking passes. We have to balance that with making, you know, providing these opportunities to, to our residents and to others with, with, you know, potentially, we don't want to get, create a barrier either for being able to access these, these opportunities because we want people to, to use these as much as possible. So I think there will be a balance in terms of, you know, looking at that as an opportunity, but that is something that we are looking at, considering, and we'll be, be able to bring forward some further information to council as part of the overall operating budget.
Thank you.
Well, I think I think you're on mute there, Mr. Warden.
You're right, I am muted. I was acknowledging Counselor Desai. My apologies.
Thank you very much, Warden. It's just a quick question regarding the parking spaces along the same vein as, as Counselor Mackey. I, I would, and I, I'm always happy to hear towards the end Randy mentioned that we do want to make sure that everyone can access the, these facilities or these outdoor spaces. One of the things, and maybe this is, maybe this isn't a question for now, and feel free to tell me if that is the case. One of the things I think we should also keep in mind is that people do pay taxes with the expectation of certain services in return, and recreational services perhaps should be some that are included, especially given the, the, the evident effects of accessing recreational services. Uh, evident effects of accessing recreational services on mental health uh during this pandemic as we've, as, as we've noted. Um, so just perhaps your thoughts on, on how those two pieces maybe connect? And how we can reconcile the fact that we do have to collect taxes, or we do have to collect revenue. I, I won't say taxes because there is other forms of revenue, but we do have to collect revenue uh in order to maintain these facilities. And at the same time, we don't want to penalize um our residents uh for um perhaps. The over tourism that has occurred, right? So how do we reconcile those two? Maybe if you could expand on yourself, let's get talks about, but thank you.
For sure, um, through you, Warden Hicks. You know, some of the models that we are uh looking at and, and other municipalities have already implemented is um. Where they're providing of, of fees for parking facilities that are associated with recreational areas and, and other locations. They offer uh free passes to residents within the community. So that's one opportunity is that um, you know, if you're a resident of Gray County, you get a free pass uh to park in any of the recreational facilities. Cause as Counselor Desai indicated, you're, you're already paying taxes to be able to uh contribute towards uh being able to maintain uh those facilities. Um, and that's where, you know, some of the models would be then uh maybe visitors to the area would have to uh then pay a, a fee. Whatever fee that, that might be. Um, so that is something that could be explored as part of that, that model um in terms of what we think we're going to need for, from an operating. Uh, and maintenance cost perspective. So we'll, uh, that's something we can consider if councils is interested in us, uh, look exploring that uh to see if that model uh may work.
Thank you very much for that, uh, for that response, Randy. I know for the questions were.
Uh, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warren, and Randy, thanks very much for that response to Counselor Desai. I really like the idea of uh, you know, free parking paths for Gray County residents that are paying the uh, paying the levy. But for our friends from the GTA that are coming up and visiting. Uh, I don't think a contribution from them would hurt at all to uh help with the uh upkeep of our, our trails and uh, you know, our woodland. So thanks very much.
Okay, Randy, we're back to you. Are you finished?
Yeah, I'm, I'm finished. Thank you.
Then over to Mary Lou.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into economic development. The two thousand and twenty-two levy requirement is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, an increase of twenty-four hundred dollars over two thousand and twenty-one. For a zero point eight five percent increase. The Economic Development Tourism Culture Department has included a strategic master plan project that will review and make recommendations. Each sector of the department will have specific portions, but the strap plan will look at the department as a whole and ensure resources are appropriately aligned. You will see a portion of this cost in each of the forecasts for economic development, tourism, and grassroots. The strap plan is scheduled for two thousand and twenty-three, and the transfer to reserve amount in the economic development budget for two thousand and twenty-two is sixty-five hundred dollars. The Community Improvement Plan Project has a levy requirement of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in each of two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. With two thousand and twenty-three, the final year of this project. The Sidneyham Campus has capital work planned of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars in two thousand and twenty-two. And that's uh primarily a metal roof replacement of thirty thousand dollars and sealant of seventy-seven hundred. And the final economic development project is a transfer of twenty-five hundred dollars to reserve. For the future replacement of the tourism vehicle that is jointly used by both departments.
Okay, um, Counselor Mackey, did, is that your hand still up from the last time, or is that a new question?
Sorry, Mr. Warden, I will lower it now.
Okay. Questions from anyone else? Not back to you, Mary Lou.
Okay, next we'll move into the tourism budget. The tourism budget has a net levy requirement of, in two thousand and twenty-two of seventeen thousand dollars, a decrease of seventeen hundred dollars. The first project is tourism signage with fifteen thousand, nine hundred in the forecast for two thousand and twenty-two. Eleven thousand, one hundred is funded from reserve. Sorry, ten thousand, one hundred is funded, eleven thousand, one hundred is funded from reserve and forty-eight hundred from levy. This will replace existing signage that is worn out and implement new signage types. And as discussed with the economic development forecast, there's a transfer to reserve of sixty-five hundred dollars. In the tourism budget to assist with the strap plan in two thousand and twenty-three. And a transfer to reserve of thirty-seven hundred dollars to assist with the replacement of the tourism vehicle in two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Mary Lou, the tourism signage uh piece. Um, there was uh something uh mentioned at the Southgate Council meeting yesterday regarding signage. At um heritage places, I guess you'd call them. Um, you know, small settlements from years ago or even settlements that are still in existence now. It, it, I had to, I had to admit that I couldn't remember exactly how that all played out a few years ago. But it seemed to me that there is a, some policy from the county that they will contribute to signage of those types of places. Is, is, is this part of that, or is that even still in existence? I, I should know that, but I don't.
I'm going to let Kim speak to that one.
Thanks so much. Are, are you referring to the brown signs?
Yes, I believe so.
Yes, um, and my understanding is that that work was done. We have a wayfinding signage policy now from two thousand and twenty-one.
Those are the blue signs, right?
That are the blue signs.
Okay.
And then, and then of course, what we're doing now with the cycling and, and trails piece is coming to the future. But I think if there are additional locations that are in need of the, if, of the brown signs. I'd want to talk to staff about that because I was under the impression that we thought we had covered those. So if some have been missed, then we should know that.
Well, and, and, and if that project is still, um, like, I mean, there'll be maintenance for some of those signs.
Of course.
Sure, and that'll be ongoing, so.
X correct.
Okay, then. Thank you very much.
Hey.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor Keating. You're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I just wondered if I could ask in relation to the tourism vehicle purchase for two thousand and twenty-four. And this may or may not be an appropriate time to ask the question, but I wondered if there's any updated open staff in relation to uh. An earlier discussion about the exploring the potential of leasing vehicles. Just wondered if there was any news on that front.
When we purchased, um, so the vehicle that we currently have was a leased vehicle and we purchased it off lease. When we determined that we were buying off lease, um, it made the most sense financially. Um, to buy and retain the vehicle for a few years versus enter into a lease. Uh, previous lease vehicles for tourism were a two-year lease. And um, in a, a previous lifetime, I used to, uh, I was an accountant for a car dealership. And two-year leases were very uncommon, four-year leases more common. Um, you have to watch the, the amount of kilometers that you um enter into. Typical leases are twenty-four thousand kilometers a year. So if you go over ninety-six thousand kilometers in a four-year lease, you either buy kilometers into the lease payment. Or you have a penalty at the end. It's something we can look at. Um, my gut, well, when we did the, the analysis, was that it was to our advantage to buy out the vehicle and retain it for a while.
Um, thank you, Mr. Warden, if I may, I guess my question, and I apologize if it wasn't clear. Was sort of um overall in terms of uh the entire fleet for the county. Um, there'd been a mention a while ago of looking at potentially moving to a lease program. So I just wondered if it was an appropriate time to ask if there was up any update in that regard.
We did have a, a conversation, and so LAS has their own, um. Uh, I believe it's three LASs was a lease uh option. Um, some, and another organization made a proposal to transportation services several months ago. And I'll defer that one to uh Pat Hoy when we get to the transportation budget. Um, but I think that the crux of that one was that they could do uh light fleet, but they couldn't do um an entire fleet. So such as uh roll-off trucks, et cetera. But we can certainly speak to that when, when Pat leads into transportation.
Okay, Counselor Keating. You're good.
All good, thank you.
Thank you. I did see Counselor Desai's hand, but it's down now.
I, I think it was from the, uh, from, from a past reason.
Okay, um, so back to Mary Lou.
Next, we move into the heritage budget, and I'll ask Jill Patterson to speak to this.
Um, hello, I'm here. Um, thank you, Mary Lou, and good morning, Warden and Council. Um, I'm going to provide a brief overview of capital projects coming up in two thousand and twenty-two. And highlight significant projects coming up in the next few years at Gray Roots. The proposed Gray Roots capital budget of, for two thousand and twenty-two requires a levy increase of fourteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Or five point two seven percent as compared with two thousand and twenty-one. First, uh, the project I'll describe is the uh Gray County Gallery update. So working with a design firm from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty, Gray Roots developed a concept to update its central long-term exhibit. In the Gray County Gallery. Uh, the first section completed is the New Voices of Gray exhibit that showcases the history of Gray County through personal stories and was unveiled in two thousand and twenty. In two thousand and twenty-one, staff are working with a new design consultant to produce design and map out content for three new sections. Fabrication and installation of the abundance, previously agriculture section, will begin in two thousand and twenty-two. In addition to the final design work and has a budget of seventy-three thousand, six hundred. With a forty-five thousand funded from gallery reserve. Twenty twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five, we'll see the fabrication and installation of the remaining sections. The new design will allow our exhibit to be easily changed to display new stories, objects, and images. So that we can adapt to public interest or community input, and visitors will always be discovering something new. The goal for the updated long-term exhibit is to reflect a relevant, representative, and inclusive history of Gray County from indigenous peoples to today. And reflect on where Gray County is headed in the future. Beginning in two thousand and twenty-six, contributions will begin to the Gray County Gallery Reserve to fund future gallery updates. The Gray Roots General Store, so construction, I'm happy to say, is underway on the replica general store in Morrison Heritage Village. In two thousand and twenty-two, staff will complete the interior finishes and dressing of the building. Costs for the final capital work are estimated at fifty thousand and will be done by Gray Root staff. Interior finishes include baseboard, window, and door casings, historic replica light fixtures, hardwood flooring and finishing. And final historic wall coverings. The next project is the Gray Roots Replace Drywall in Temporary Exhibition Hall. So the temporary exhibition hall has been painted repeatedly to accommodate the changing of exhibits. Consequently, a thick layer of paint has accumulated, and this makes this uh maintenance work necessary. A budget of twenty-six thousand, five hundred has been included for this work and is funded from the main building's improvement reserve. Uh, replace heat pumps. So the largest project in two thousand and twenty-two with funding source from Gray Roots Main Building Improvement Reserve. Is the replacement of six heat pumps based off the building condition assessment. As the museum is, uh, was built in two thousand and four, we are entering a period where equipment may need to be replaced on a life cycle study. The next project is the flat roof and package rooftop units replacement. The replacement of the roof and package rooftop units timeline in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. Is based on a roofing consultant recommendation as the roof has multiple elevations. The package rooftop units must be lifted from the roof in order to replace the flat roofing system. This will be the ideal time to replace the package rooftop units to minimize any damage that may occur by removing the package units once, more than once. The funding sources for these projects are from the Gray Roots Main Building Improvement Reserve. And as Mary Lou mentioned, um, there is a plan uh scheduled for a refresh um of the strategic master plan in two thousand and twenty-three. And a transfer of reserve of six thousand, five hundred is budgeted for two thousand and twenty-two to assist in this project. Transfers to reserve for capital projects include replacement of the Archives' micro fish reader. An update to the design of the Gray Roots Museum and Archives website, replacing our riding lawnmower tractor. Uh, front of house update and building repairs to the Morrison Heritage Village and main buildings. So I'll hand it over for questions.
I've seen any hands. So, thank you, Joan. May we pass it back to Mary Lou?
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the social services function. The net levy requirement for this function is four million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars. An increase of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred, or an eight point nine four percent increase. Of note, one percent of this, the levy is um a contribution to the Affordable Housing Reserve. As was discussed in the two thousand and twenty-one budget deliberations. So that's uh approximately six hundred thousand dollars. Next, we'll move into the social services portion of this forecast, and I'll ask Barb Fady to speak to this.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Good morning, Mr. Warden, County Council. Um, so for our capital uh needs, they uh basically are our tools that we use. Our computers and re, and printers, uh, monitors, we continue to contribute to that reserve. And you can see that we'll be drawing from those to replace uh as needed. And then um the balance of our capital forecast involves our early-on center in Hanover. And uh, the early-on center is aging out. It is uh almost fifty years. It was built in nineteen seventies. And uh, like some of us fifty-year-old uh buildings were needing some replacements. Uh, I think what we're going to see is that um we are looking for an alternate location, to be honest. Um, we have moved uh pivoted over the last year and a half with uh COVID. Um, providing services remotely when schools continue to provide services remotely. Uh, we did have some of these items in our two thousand and twenty-one budget. They are funded from reserve. But we've moved them to two thousand and twenty-two, and we'll be carefully reviewing what that might look like based on. What our partnerships look like for opportunities to relocate our services. So you can see we've got some flooring, um vinyl carpet flooring at um sixty-seven thousand, two hundred. We have some ceiling replacement uh at forty-six thousand, five hundred. And we have some electrical and lighting issues uh for another twenty-two, six hundred. And then we have a hot water hydronic distribution systems repair, so uh hot water heat as well. So uh, that's a twenty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. And finally, some sidewalk um replacement and repair that we were looking at um for ten thousand, two hundred. So I'll ask if there are any questions on that.
Counselor Mel?
Uh, not so much a question, just a comment, Barb. Um, perhaps, don't be so uh hasty to discard things that are older than fifty. Uh, sometimes uh they can be uh better than new in some regards. Anyway, just a comment, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warren, thank you for that comment. I would also add that um we are uh closing in on the two thousand and twenty-five accessibility uh requirements for the province. And this is a two-story building and would require a significant investment in um a lift or a, an elevator or something. And, and so for that reason too, we are looking at something that might be a bit more suitable for us, uh, and especially working with our partners. We know how critical it is for families to have a one-stop shop, and if we could be partnered with a school, that is most ideal.
Right, Counselor Desai, you next?
Thank you, uh, Warden Hicks. Uh, to respond to Counselor Millen, I guess he's talking about the fifty-four years of the uh lease mediocrity, I guess. Uh, but I will ask a question of Barb, um, which is why I put my hand up. Uh, with regards to your comment on we, we, on early on having pivoted to providing services online or, or virtually. Uh, as the schools have, uh, what, what are, what are your thoughts on how that might change again? Uh, with schools becoming in person again, uh, will we? becoming in-person again? Uh, will we have to not necessarily pivot back, but will we have to go back to a point where we might need uh the space that we have right now or the amount of space that we have right now? Um, and and y- you know, sort of go back to the model that we're we're functioning under right now. Thank you.
Oh, through you, Mr. Warden. That's a great question, Councilor Desai. Um, we have been um building a model that works uh in both worlds. Um, we tend to provide virtual programming so that we can continue to support the families that we support. Um, but uh staff themselves are definitely uh looking forward to opportunities to engage with families on the floor, uh, the children, and currently it is a blend. Um, so we do have uh based on the numbers that are allowed to be within uh and the restrictions and the protocols, uh, the screening processes, all of those pieces, we are um providing services for both. So, we'll be prepared for both. Um, what we're missing is our partnerships that we also um enjoy, which is, you know, uh, public health and and other entities that team up with our staff and and have a deeper reach and support people who who definitely um look forward to that time with our our staff and the programs that we offer.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I do not see any other hands. So, maybe with that, I'll thank you, Barb, and right back to Mary Lou.
Thanks, Barb. And now we'll move to housing and with Anne-Marie Shaw.
Thank you, Council. Um, for our two thousand twenty-two to two thousand thirty-one is based on the draft um BCA reports. Um, we did uh take the information from the reports into consideration and implemented into this budget. Um, staff on site always identify uh new capital needs. Um, and we take a look at each uh capital project that we have scheduled for the year, determine if it needs to be done um or if we need to move up a project, and then we would adjust accordingly in order to um, you know, maximize the the funds that we have. So, you see on the first page here, this is a lot of our preventative maintenance and our ongoing capital expenses that we have. Um, there are some new lines due to new preventative maintenance program that we have. Um, it is um instead of looking at it through an operating lens and through more sporadic, we've uh put together a coordinated tract uh system now that rotates through our buildings with some of our needs. An example would that be the crack filling and line painting of our asphalt, um hoping to extend the um length of of life of of those. Um, new is also our elevator repairs. Uh, seven years ago, when our BCA was done in housing, elevators were not part of it. Um, so we did have that um included uh in the BCA this year uh and have put um some funds um for next year and the year after for some of the um repairs and preventative maintenance that were identified. Um, another example would be our family unit renovations. Um, we did based on BCA and based on our own experience with the increasing prices of labor and materials, I've put a more realistic number um in that to reflect those changes. Uh, and I the rest of them, again, are more of the preventative. Um, so, Mary Lou, if you can go to page two seventy-one, that's where our two thousand and twenty-two projects begin. So, here you'll look at, again, we mentioned, I mentioned earlier um that we are taking advantage of the safe restart funding through the province, and we are replacing um our air makeup um makeups in our buildings. So, these are ones that were scheduled to be done with this year, or sorry, next year, in the next couple of years. Uh, and so, we're grateful for those uh provincial funds in order to add that into our budget. Um, next, if you'll continue into the next page again, Mary Lou. I'm just going to put some highlights. We have a number of projects here. Um, you'll note that um sometimes our projects like window placements and balconies and whatnot uh come in groups, which is great. Um, a lot of our housing was built at the same time, so things tend to come to their natural end of life at the same time. Uh, this works for us because we find that when we do tender projects together, uh, we do tend to get a better price um than if we tender them individually. Um, just to look at a couple of them, um, we do have our window replacement at Westmount units. Um, as you'll remember, we were looking back in two thousand and eighteen to sell some of our Westmount units. Um, we've only had two that have come available, so we have put them back onto our capital list. Um, as the buildings continue to age, we were hoping um that there might be more uh that had come for sale at this time, but just due to our increasing rental units and the lack of vacancy, um, there has not been much movement there. Um, the only other project I wanted to bring to attention is a larger project of kitchen replacements at Victoria Village. Uh, the kitchens are the originals. They are about thirty years old. Um, many of them are in rough shape, and when they were built, um, they weren't bu- built well because the pipe under the sink tends to freeze in the wintertime, uh, something that we've learned since we've become the um owner of the building. So, we will be replacing the kitchens, and that funding will be coming from um the uh capital reserve funds we received from Golden Town. And be happy to answer any questions.
I do not see any hands. So, with that said, I'll thank you, Anne-Marie. Back to you, Mary Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, so now we're moving into long-term care. And we have here the the summary for the the three homes plus the redevelopment transfer to reserve with a net levy requirement of just over two point two million. We'll start with Gray Gables, and I'll ask Jennifer Cornell to speak.
Great. Thanks, Mary Lou, and good morning, uh, Warden Hicks and Council. Uh, we follow uh the very similar approach that Anne-Marie just described in terms of utilizing the draft building condition assessment report and uh our own review and and staff experience. This uh pro- uh forecast has been recently presented to the Long-Term Care Committee of Management in greater detail, so I'm I'm just going to give a high-level summary. As a result of the many challenges that have come with the pandemic, several projects have been carried forward across the three care communities. There have been projects added based on end-of-life, based on the recommendations of the Building Condition Assessment Report. Uh, so just a couple of examples, uh, at Gray Gables, the dry sprinkler system and uh fencing for one of the Memorial Gardens, which really supports that safe access to outdoor activity. And uh, it's become very highlighted during the pandemic that that opportunity to expand our isolation space outside of our own rooms and into the outdoors safely is really critical and really important. At Lee Manor, there have been some uh new projects that proposed around uh bathroom fixtures, furniture replacement, draperies uh in keeping up the aesthetics and the upkeep of the of the home. And uh, another new uh project at Lee Manor is the entrance, the door system, and and there, while it sounds like it should be simple, it it isn't, and it's a complex uh something we really want to get right. We want people to be able to easily access and and safely get in and out of the building. Uh, and uh, Rockwood Terrace in has has taken a a similar approach over the last couple of years in working to review the the scheduled capital projects and balance redevelopment uh that's on the horizon. So, the only new project in uh the Rockwood Terrace is the request for a tractor snowblower to be able to support uh snow removal and uh maintenance of grounds, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilor Potter.
Uh, thank you, and uh through you, Mr. Warden, to Jen. Do you have any uh sense that there may be things coming uh as a result of COVID that we wouldn't anticipate? And uh, what uh, what preparations do you have in mind for that? And I have no idea what it might be, but I think twenty months ago, we had no idea that we would be facing the situation we're in. So, uh, I just wondered if if you have any sense yet of of where things might go in the next year or two or in or even the longer term. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, and through you, Mr. Warden. Um, excellent question, and uh gives me an opportunity to highlight another project that um is on this list. So, at Lee Manor, the redevelopment of the resident common area and staff area have been has been on the the project plan for a couple of years, and we've opted to postpone that project. Um, recognizing that what we imagined that common space and staff space to look like has changed as a result of COVID, and we need, you know, we need to be prepared for what is general visiting going to look like in the future? Are we always going to need indoor visiting stations, or will we get to a place, which I'm hopeful, where we need to have some opportunity for in the in the case of an outbreak, but uh to have visiting stations but are still able to support general visits at all different spots in the home? So, we have been looking at our projects and our space and and keeping in mind infection prevention and control strategies and and using that lens to make sure we're moving forward in in the right direction and and really keeping an eye on uh what are we hearing from the province and from the experts at Public Health Ontario and uh local public health support to make sure that we're applying that lens to the changes that we're proposing. And some of it we maybe just don't know yet, so we're uh taking a cautious and and slow approach.
So, and I want to commend you for the work you and your staff have done throughout all this. You've done very well. Uh, but what I was, I guess, looking for, and I I I, you have the same crystal ball the rest of us have. Uh, but I just, whether you have any feeling yet about uh whether we should build contingencies into the budget in case you need to do uh uh retrofits or who knows what it could be uh during the next year.
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden. At this point, I don't have a sense. Uh, you're right, the the crystal ball is a little bit foggy. Um, but something that we're, we are keeping a close eye on. And and we'll bring that information forward to Committee of Management and and to Council as we get it.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other hands, so thank you, Jennifer, and over back to you, Mary Lou.
Now, we'll move into the final um function, transportation and public safety. And that levy for this function is thirteen million ninety-one thousand eight hundred dollars, an increase of one million five thousand three hundred dollars or eight point three two percent. And as I mentioned earlier, um, there's a one point two percent um levy that has been um allocated to the construction resurfacing a minor capital portion of this budget um as a result of what was recommended in the asset management strategy. And then we will move on to paramedic services with Kevin McNabb. Heather, can you tell me whether Kevin's on the call?
I don't see him here, Mary Lou.
Okay, all right. I knew he wasn't on a bit earlier, so. Um, the paramedic services forecast requires a net levy of seven hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred dollars, an increase of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred or a five point seven two percent increase over two thousand twenty-one. Um, the first on the project is the debenture payment for Chadsworth, sixty-five thousand four hundred dollars, and it's self-financed over a thirteen-year term. Then we move into ambulances. Ambulances have a six-year life, typically with two hundred and seventy-five thousand kilometers or more when they're disposed of. There are fifteen ambulances in the fleet, nine frontline, six spares, and the spares provide coverage when a vehicle's in for service, as well as its shift change to ensure that staff coming on shift can respond to calls. Um, for the next few years, we for two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five, we are reusing power loads which saves about fifteen thousand dollars per vehicle, and there are two ambulances scheduled for replacement in two thousand twenty-two. You'll see the tablet computers are scheduled for replacement in two thousand twenty-six. They have a five-year lifespan. Power stretchers. There are fifteen frontline and two spares in the fleet. Power stretchers reduce the potential for staff injury, and they work in conjunction with the power load systems on the ambulance. Stretchers have a ten-year life, and they're based on a replacement cycle, and no, no stretchers are required in two thousand twenty-two. It's emergency response units. So, we currently have a fleet of seven by the end of this fall, and that includes the three that are being purchased through the Community Paramedicine and Long-Term Care Program. Two vehicles that we currently have are used by duty supervisors. They have a five-year lifespan and are in excess also of two hundred and seventy-five thousand kilometers when replaced. We have one community paramedicine vehicle with a seven-year lifespan that's funded by the Southwest Lynn. We have one incident response unit, that's the trailer, and it has a twenty-year life. So, this forecast includes the the purchase of one more vehicle in two thousand twenty-two. That would give a fleet of eight units. The cost is seventy-one thousand four hundred, and it would be a first response unit with a six-year lifespan. There will be savings versus using an ambulance as a first response vehicle, and the adjustment to the ambulance replacement schedule has us keeping one ambulance as a spare for a seventh year versus replacing it with the others in six years to accommodate this vehicle deployment adjustment. Cardiac monitors, DFIBs. There are currently twenty-one in service. These units have a seven-year lifespan, and when eighteen units are replaced in two thousand twenty-three, the forecast recommends replacing or sorry, purchasing an additional two units as a result of equipping first response and community paramedicine vehicles. And then there are three units that will be replaced in two thousand twenty-eight, and those are the units that were purchased this year under the Community Paramedicine and Long-Term Care Program. Next, we have the vehicle AVL and mobile Wi-Fi for forty-three thousand seven hundred, scheduled in two thousand twenty-four. That's nineteen frontline and two spare units. It provides location information to dispatch to, so that they uh dispatch the appropriate crew that is close to a call, and it provides digital aided mapping. Ambulance call reports are required to be completed as soon as a call is completed. And so, it's fully functional on the uh ambulance. It's used on the tablet computers, and it requires a reliable internet signal in order to do this. The service also has tracked stair chairs. There are sixteen in the fleet, thirteen required for replacement in two thousand twenty-six. They have a ten-year life. The next project, looking at two thousand twenty-five, is um the build of a new base in Durham. Uh, the anticipated site would be on the proposed Rockwood Terrace build. Uh, funds for the future deba- debenture payment are being phased in over six years with a build to occur as early as two thousand twenty-five, and the first debenture payment would be made in two thousand twenty-six. Currently, space is leased from South Bruce Gray Health Center. It's about eighteen hundred square feet, was built in the eighties, and there's been issues with ventilation, air exchange, heat, mold, and temperature control. The building also lacks appropriate-sized storage and cleanup areas. A new base would allow for appropriate decontamination and cleaning areas, increased room for equipment and supplies, and improved crew areas. And then, um, there are several lifecycle replacements with the Owen Sound Station. It was built in two thousand four. The first is work on the roof in two thousand twenty-five, uh, parking lot in two thousand twenty-six, and heating cooling system in two thousand twenty-six after the roof is replaced. And then there's some carbon monoxide detector work at Craigly in two thousand twenty-seven. All of these projects are funded from the BCA Reserve. And then the last two project sheets are transfers to reserve that fund the vehicle and equipment replacement and future capital repairs for the stations.
Thank you. RCAL's got her hand up.
I'll need to say two things. Thank you, Mary Lou, for providing that um information to Council on short notice. Uh, for Council's information, I'm so proud of Kevin McNabb has taken a real leadership position. Um, I think you're all aware of the the recent issues with regard to uh COVID and in here in Owen Sound and being a little bit on the short-staffed end of things within paramedic services. Um, Kevin's played a real leadership role of being out there on the ground every day, providing vaccine to people um as they can get them. So, tremendous amount of work. I know, I think Monday on this week, he gave the vaccine to eighty-five individuals himself. And um, so, he's sorry he wasn't able to be here this morning. He just, he couldn't get away from from the clinic that he's running. But um, he did want to apologize to Council for that absence, and I wanted to say thank you to Mary Lou for um delivering that information on Kevin's behalf.
Councilor Potter.
All right. In that case, I would congratulate Kevin on his on his uh uh choice of uh of activity for this afternoon or or this morning. I think what he's doing is much more important.
Thank you.
I'm his finance lead, so it's very easy for me to speak to his. I'm his finance lead, so it's very easy for me to speak to his budget.
Also, I do not see any other uh hands, and so I'm gathering Mary Lou that proceeds to report.
Okay, and next we are going to move into transportation, and I'll turn it over to Pat Hoy.
Okay, thanks, Mary Lou, and uh Mr. Warden and council. Um a few years ago, uh transportation kind of recognized that uh we had a hard time putting enough uh resources into our long-term planning. Um as you'll see in the in the capital project program here, there's about a hundred jobs in there. Um but the engineering staff, uh you're always kind of pulled away from planning for something for four years away uh when there's a contractor on site uh that needs something immediately or a call from the public or people complaining about speed or or a policy that needs updating or those types of things. So we had created the uh project planning engineer position. And um it was filled in a couple of years ago by Trevor Ierton um from Chatsworth. Uh we hired him anyway, even though he's from Chatsworth. Um and Trevor's main job, uh he does many jobs, but uh his main job is really advancing our asset management. Getting the asset condition ratings. He put out the tender this year for and last year uh for all our storm sewer CCTV. Uh he works uh constantly on the ten-year capital. Uh we've produced a ten-year capital and five-year for a while. Um but it was, it, you know, even though we say it's a living document, we kind of only would look at it when we needed to get it done. So um he's constantly working on that ten-year capital plan with the member municipalities. Uh coordinating dates with their projects, working with their consultants and our consultants if we hire them. Uh the projects are, you know, the larger ones, there's so many land acquisition utilities, environmental assessments. Um we really needed someone that uh would just look at that, um those projects that are a few years away. Um and and that results in better budgeting. Um you know, it's it's best practice. Um this year, you know, Trevor had um completed all the work for our uh or is completing the work for our asset management asset management and work management software. And also the amount of work that um we put in on our ten-year plan really helps with our development charges now as well. So um I'd like to introduce Trevor. Uh the budget is in, or budget, the ten-year capital is really in three categories for us. There's the construction resurfacing and minor capital, uh the depots and domes and the machinery. So I'll introduce Trevor to talk about the construction resurfacing and minor capital portion of the ten-year capital plan.
Hello, I'm not sure if everyone can hear me or not. I can't seem to get my video going for some reason, but.
We can hear you.
Okay, I can just continue on then if the video's not gonna work. Um, thank you, Pat, and good morning, County Council. Uh today I'm gonna speak to the transportation capital services or capital construction budget. Uh for twenty twenty two, transportation services is anticipating a net levy increase of nine hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars, uh which equates to a nine point one seven percent increase from the twenty twenty one budget. Uh specifically for construction resurfacing and minor capital. Uh as Mary Lou mentioned, this increase does include the one point two one percent net levy increase for asset management. Which which accounts for roughly seventy-five percent of the budget increase for our uh construction works. Uh the remainder of that increase is mostly attributed to inflation. Uh so I don't wanna, I don't plan on going through every single project as I'm sure some of you are happy about, because it's quite an extensive list. Uh but I will go through some of the highlights and changes uh to some of the projects identified in this year's plan. So first, we can, uh I do want to go over a couple general highlights to our plan. The first is that we're continuing to introduce more pavement preservation projects. Uh these include micro surfaces, overlays, uh and grind and pave uh type projects to the schedule. These uh projects really help to extend the service life of our roads, uh and they provide excellent financial benefits. Uh as well as the cost per year of service life for these treatments is significantly less than the cost per year of service life for a reconstruction project. Secondly, we have incorporated more siree and cold-in-place recycling projects to the schedule. Uh as you may know, the creation of asphalt is by no means a clean process. So utilizing these pavement recycling techniques for our roads helps to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions during construction and also allows us to reuse the material in our roads uh basically to reconstruct it without having to pull in new material, which just requires more mining procedures and of course more uh greenhouse gas emission and pollution. Now, if I get into some of the single projects, so starting with the twenty twenty two projected plan, uh can be found on page one zero five three of the corporate, so yeah, next page. Uh we have some notable project changes. I'll first start with Gray Road seven. Uh this is a project located north of Towson and Kimberly. Uh it's, as some of you know, it's this piece going up the hill out of the valley, and it is not in great condition. Uh however, in previous years, we've been forced to push this project back in order to make room from for some of our other urban projects where the timelines uh were more defined due to partnerships with our member municipalities. Many of these projects have shifted back uh in within the last year. So this has allowed us to move this project forward and get it replaced, which is great news for our team. Uh we also have the Gray Road ten project in Elmwood. This project was originally scheduled to be a full reconstruction. Uh but we've since uh through the CCTV inspections as part of the asset management, we've identified that the storm sewer uh still has approximately twenty years of remaining service life. Uh and uh because of that, we've decided to switch this to a grind and pave project in order to align our asset life so that we can go back in a timeframe when the storm sewer eventually requires replacement and replace the road at the same time. We also have two projects that were originally scheduled for twenty twenty one. These were the Gray Road fifteen reconstruction project uh in at the north limit of Owen Sound. And structure nine dash three five four on Gray Road nine. Both of these projects were tendered in the spring, uh and each came in at what we considered considerably high bids uh for the work. So both of these projects were delayed until next year, and we're planning on getting an early tendering process for both to garner some more competitive bids. We also have projects on Gray Road two between Gray Road nineteen and Gray Road one nineteen, which includes the Village of Ravenna. As well as a micro surface project on Gray Road four from Maxwell to Gray Road one twenty four. Gray Road eight will be getting an overlay treatment uh which will help provide additional structure to better accommodate truck traffic in the area. As this was recently done as a single paving or a single layer of asphalt, uh roughly four or five years ago, so adding that additional structure will really help to uh uh extend the service life of that road. We also have Gray Road eighteen, which will be pulverized and paved between Gray Road eleven and Gray Road nine or twenty-nine, sorry, just uh north of Bogner. Finally, for twenty twenty two, we have structure nine dash three four nine on Gray Road nine, which requires replacement. And pending a final engineering report, we plan on completing a fiber reinforced polymer wrap project on structure thirteen zero nine two. And this is to address the cracking concerns that we have on the bridge. And the wrap is effectively going to increase the resistance of tension forces in the beams of the structure, which is awfully technical. But uh hopefully it's will add the uh extra life to our bridge. In twenty twenty three, which is still on page fifty-three and partially on fifty-four, we are showing the reconstruction of Gray Road seven in the town of Meaford. Uh this project is a result of conversations with town of Meaford staff and we're the idea is to align anticipated infrastructure replacements with our road reconstruction. And we are planning a consultant design, which will be led by the town of Meaford in twenty twenty two with construction to occur in twenty twenty three. We also have the Gray Road seventeen B project through Nichols Gully. Uh this project's being moved back to twenty twenty three, and this is to allow time for our staff to work with Georgian Bluff staff to determine a design that best suits each of our needs. Sorry, that was on fifty-two, actually. Mary Lou, just because it was delayed. Uh yeah, so this would be the determinant design that best suits our needs for this road section and also provides some additional time for potential property acquisition uh that may be required, as we do have a very narrow right-of-way at the north extent of that road section. Uh the next project will be on fifty-three or fifty-four, actually, sorry, Mary Lou. Uh the next one is Gray Road twenty-seven project, and this is a project that's in partnership with West Gray. Uh it'll include upgrades of the underground infrastructure. And it's also to handle the increased development that is occurring at the north end of Durham. There is also the Gray Road twenty-eight project in Hanover. Uh and this has been moved forward from twenty-four to twenty-three to better align with ongoing development in this part of Hanover. Uh I should mention, we recently met with the town of Hanover staff to discuss this project and some of its design elements, uh one of which includes incorporating the town trail network in this area. To allow for better connectivity for the residents and additional safety as well. In twenty twenty-three, one noticeable change is on Gray Road nineteen in the town of Blue Mountains. Through conversations with town staff, we've moved the roundabout construction project to twenty twenty-four to align with the Gray Road nineteen for laning project. Uh this is mainly to avoid scheduling conflicts with uh adjacent town of Blue Mountains road reconstruction work on Montero Road. That's to appear in twenty twenty-three. I also wanted to point out a change to the timing of the work on Gray Road five near the hospital, you know, in Sound. Uh this project is in, been moved to twenty twenty-seven. It will be further down, unfortunately. Uh what this project is, is it's based predominantly on development around the hospital, and because that development has been um lagging, we've essentially been carrying it in twenty twenty-three for quite some time, but we realize that that's not likely to be aligning correctly at this point. So we've, with consultation from the city of Owen Sound, we've decided to move that work back to twenty twenty-seven. So those are most of the highlights of our plan. I can take any questions if you have any and.
Thank you, Trevor. I cannot see hands. Well, thank Trevor, and be back to you, Pat.
Yeah, I can start with the uh domes and and depots. Uh I think it's thirteen fifteen of the package. Oh, there it is there.
Counselor Mackey has a question.
Oh, oh, sorry, Council Mackey. You're muted. Council Mackey, you're muted.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Uh I just wanted to point out that uh the township of Chatsworth is very proud to have Trevor Ierton as a resident, contrary to what Pat had to say. I guess it's a good indication uh of a good manager when you hire smarter. Thanks.
That's always our goal. In my case, it's not too tough. Um so onto our domes and depots. So the big, the big change you'll see is right in the middle of your screen here, that patrol D facility. Um you know, going from three point eight million to seven point two million. Um that being said, this this project, as as you all know, is is fairly fluid. Um we haven't really found a spot for it yet. That seven point two million is is taking into account our uh crazy time right now with the the price of materials and the price of construction, and everybody seems to be getting construction completed as far as buildings, et cetera. Um but that being said, our original, our original intent was to hopefully um get some assurances that we weren't getting kicked out of of Flesherton in twenty twenty-four. So um we had asked many, many times, uh different uh people in our organization and asked different MTO people. Uh we never had any success getting any uh assurances that some random day in twenty twenty-four, we might be out. Um that being said, uh Kim Windrove and and the regional director for MTO have been working together. Um that um we might not, we might be able to extend our stay in Durham. I mean, in Flesherton, sorry, in Flesherton. So i- if we can extend our stay, we're not in any hurry to go out and buy expensive land and and build a great big depot, which there's a lot of efficiencies in one depot compared to operating Dundalk and Flesherton, but um is there, is there seven point two million dollars of efficiencies? Probably not. So um it, that is, that is still a work in progress that we're um, you know, we're trying to um align those. Uh just do what's best with the money that we have uh while still maintaining our operations, because um it, you know, it was feeling pretty catastrophic to us if all of a sudden in twenty twenty-four, we had nowhere to go. Um that being said, the MTO use of Flesherton has been fairly limited with their contractor. Um they've basically used uh one bay for quite a few years. Um and and you know, we're kind of leaning that hopefully they think that would be okay for them to just maintain the use they have. So uh the other thing you'll see on this page is that patrol being Clarksburg. Um so that was uh uh one interesting note there. Um that parking lot, I think in the BCA is just to be done. I can't remember if it was three or four years ago. Um but it, you know, it's one of those kind of nice to have. Um it definitely needed some work. It wasn't great. There was some maintenance our guys would be doing to to maintain it, but it was one of those things where we didn't really want to put out a tender for um just a parking lot paving job. So um we've kind of, you know, um carried it through. Now it's going to be aligned with um other uh paving jobs right in the area on our roads. So we can kind of, we're kind of looking to save some economies of scale there by putting a bunch of um jobs together. Uh that Kimberly salt dome replacement, there'll be a a report on the domes later today. Um but um we've gotten some additional studies done on the domes and they are reaching the end of their life. So that five hundred thousand uh would be for a new uh building. It wouldn't be a dome. It would be, you know, a new square building, which um basically, in our experience, most entities are going to that now. That hundred and fifty thousand for the Sarac garage replacement. Um we have a a contract with Walker now uh to do two routes in Georgian Bluffs. Um so we're looking to, uh I think they, we've extended their contract a year. Um so in the next few years, we're gonna be um trying to locate somewhere um to maintain our equipment to do some of the the work up there. So there's some garage work to be done there on the shared facility. And I think that's about it for the highlights of the domes and depots. I see there's a question there from Counselor Keating.
Keating, yes.
Uh thanks, Mr. Warden. Pat, I wonder if I could ask in relation to um parking lots, if there's any consideration at all recognizing our climate change uh that we are so conscious of, if there's any consideration of permeable pavement options as as we go forward.
Um through you, Mr. Warden, that that is a great point. It's something we haven't really looked at. Um we probably should through the the climate change committee. I, yeah, I do know those 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 parking lots in our in our depots take a beating with the the weight of our trucks, you know, that would be much more than any other vehicle. So um but it's something we should try to investigate and maybe lower our footprint a bit. It would never hurt, I guess. Yeah.
Anything else, Counselor Keating?
Um, no, not in relation to this section. Thank you very much, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands.
Okay, so I'll talk about some of the machinery section. Um just to, well, maybe I'll I'll just go over them quick here, but um generally, uh we meet every year with our our um fleet group. Um we move some, a few projects around here and there, um just trying to um kind of better distribute our expenses. Um we kind of got in a in a in a situation a few years ago where we had, we hadn't bought any equipment for a long time. And then we ended up kind of getting where we're buying a whole bunch of trucks the same year. So uh Calvin Robinson, our finance person, has been working with us um while telling us what to do, really, uh in order, in order to make our our uh just in order to make our schedule a little um more even, rather than buying a whole bunch in one year where you're really susceptible to um the market condition. So um so really, the only changes are just purchasing additional half-ton for the the um bridge crew. Uh at one time, we reused the ambulance. That's not really required anymore. It was kind of a mobile office. We have an office in Chatsworth. for our bridge foreman now. Purchasing those final two tandems or the two roll-offs, replacing two tandems. We had put that off a year. We just wanted one more year to look at the roll-offs. And it, all our guys are just thrilled with the roll-offs where they're used way more. They've got all sorts of attachments that just come in handy for everybody. And they really worked well. So, and just to answer Counselor Keating's question earlier about the leasing. Yeah, we looked into that and there the, the group that came and talked to us, a lot of their and as Mary Lou had mentioned, it is the lighter, the lighter trucks, the half tons and, you know, that type of thing. But I mean, we have a ton of, we have a lot of those too. So it, it's worth investigating for sure. But it seemed to us that the, the, the fleet company, we get a pretty good deal, a government deal on, on half tons and, and, and that type of thing. And I, and I just find that they want to just sell them quite frequently. Because we got a deal, say we pay fifteen percent less than a regular person, you sell it after two years. You know, the used market for trucks is quite good. And it was kind of making their profit that way. But it created a lot of other issues in that we have our mechanics. We have four mechanics plus our fleet foreman. They do all the ambulance work. They do some work for the fire departments in and it just, we get a pretty good price on our, on our mechanic work. They do a very good job. They're very familiar with our equipment. It would have been difficult to arrange with a fleet company to do certain works. We find our schedule can be flexible because we have guys and we can move equipment around, whereas, you know, we didn't want to get to the point where we're waiting in line behind a, you know, a garage that took someone else first. So we're kind of on hold with the, with the subbing out the fleet for now. We really like the way our, our fleet is handled. We have very competent staff and, and so we're not really investigating that lease anymore.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any questions from council. So I will thank you, Pat, and turn things over to Mary Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. That is the, the entirety of the ten-year capital forecast. The motion in the report is to receive it that it be used for planning purposes for the twenty twenty-two budget. And that as per the county's purchasing policy, staff be authorized to use the appropriate procurement methods to procure up to fifty percent of the gross expenditures contained in the first year of the current capital forecast with approved council recommendation, sort of resolution. And as Pat mentioned, should this be approved, at the next meeting, he would be bringing back a report looking for early approval to go out and tender for the roll-off trucks.
Okay, council, so on, I'm gonna call the question on the motion respective as ten-year capital forecast.
Mary Lou, can you, sorry, can you stop sharing your screen? Thanks. That way I can see everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
We're getting a regular Zoom message now. Can you folks hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question on the motion. Is there anyone opposed? See any? So I'm going to say that that is carried. Okay, so we are now at twelve twenty-four. I think we need to take a break. I think we should have our tummies filled. I'm going to suggest that we come back at one o'clock. That works for everyone. I'll see you all then at one o'clock.
All right. It's one o'clock. Madam Clerk, how are we doing?
Yep, we're good to go, Mr. Warden. We do have forum.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I would mention to Council, welcome back. I hope you had a good lunch. I would make mention that the D.C. Hearing Committee has got another engagement at two o'clock. So with that said, it sure would be nice for us to be able to make that timeline. I don't want to stop.
Sorry, 2:30, Mr. Warden.
Everybody not. Okay, we're on to item six B. Stephanie is on deck. We're dealing with the Wilder Lake subdivision final report. It's moved by councillor Mill and seconded by councillor Carlton.
Oh, Mr. Ward. I'm sorry. Yes.
Um, I'm going to declare a beginner interest in this. This item, so I recuse myself from the debate and the vote. And of course, of course, I won't be able to move this either.
No.
That makes sense. Yes. So could we have somebody else other than councillor Mill to move it? Councillor Mackey, thank you very much. And then seconded by councillor Carlton. So Stephanie, you have the floor.
Actually, it'll be myself, uh, Warden Hicks. Sorry about that confusion. So the the purpose of this report is to provide an overview of our proposed plan of subdivision known as the Wilder Lake subdivision. And to recommend that the Plan B draft approved subject to recommended conditions of draft approval that were attached to the report. Good. Uh, so I can ever see the screen, the presentation. Yeah, great. So this image here shows the subject lands. The subject lands are approximately forty nine hectares or one hundred and twenty one acres in size. However, the area proposed for development is approximately twenty one hectares or about fifty two acres. The remaining lands will be the golf course lands. The subject lands are developed as the Homestead Golf Course and Winter Resort, which currently contains a clubhouse, restaurant and rental accommodation. Uh, and those are cottages that are along the shore of Wilder Lake. The intent would be to maintain the golf course use on the subject lands in conjunction with the proposed residential development. And to remove six of the eight existing cottages along the shore. And convert two of them to nonhabitable structures, one to be used as a change room, the other to support property events associated with the golf course. The site is located on the western shore of Wilder Lake. Uh, it has been confirmed that through title searches and legal documents that the portion of the lake bed adjacent to the subject lands is crown land and not privately owned. Uh, surrounding land uses, including the existing golf course lands, there's there's farmlands in the area. Uh, vacant lands as well as residential uses. There is an existing landfill site which exists approximately one kilometer to the west of the proposed subdivision. You can actually see it on the screen on the far side of the the image there. So this image shows the proposed plan of subdivision and the proposals to create twenty nine new single detached residential lots. One lot which would contain as some existing buildings associated with the golf course. And that's the located this lot here. Three blocks for stormwater management and one new road referred to as Sunny Rock Drive on the proposed plan. The subject lands are located in the inland lakes and shoreline designation, which is considered a settlement area designation. The site is to be accessed from South Gate side road twenty six. And would follow the existing internal road to the clubhouse. And then further internal roadways are proposed to be constructed to provide access to the proposed lots. In addition to the plate of subdivision application, a zoning amendment has been submitted to the township of Southgate to implement the proposed subdivision. The proposed plan is to be developed in two phases. The first phase will include a portion of the internal road from the entrance to the site. And then east to the lake and then a portion of road that runs parallel to the lake. So. Uh, roughly like that would be the first phase and then the lots all along that that road would be part of the first phase. And then the remaining part would be part of the second. There were a number of background reports and technical studies prepared in support of this development. Uh, including an independent third party peer review that was done for some of the key technical studies. Including the hydro geological report, the site servicing study and the stormwater management port. And copies of all these studies, reports and the period comments can be found on the county website. And there's a link attached to the report. A public meeting was held on June twenty fourth, twenty twenty by the township of Southgate. Uh, for the zoning amendment as well as the planet subdivision application. And a link to the public meeting minutes were included in the report. Uh, the next two slides provide a summary of the comments received uh, from members of the public. Uh, which are also captured in the staff report. I will go over these comments and identify how from a staff perspective, these comments have been addressed or will be addressed as part of recommended conditions of draft approval. So the first comments or theme of comments is around uh, questions regarding the dock and ownership of the lake bed. Uh, with indications that the lake bed is owned by the crown and that comment should be obtained from the province. So initially, it was believed that the lake bed what was under private ownership. But after further investigations by the applicant and following review of the information provided by county legal staff. It can be confirmed that the portion of lake bed that is at least adjacent to the subject lands is crown land and not in private ownership. With respect to obtaining comments from the province, all applications. Uh, subdivision applications are circulated to the province through their one window planning process. And county staff also noted to M M H staff that the bed of Wilder Lake adjacent to subject lands was confirmed to be crown land. And based on this county staff asked if there were any additional comments. And through discussions with M M H staff, they noted they sent this to their legal and M N R F for review. And both indicated that they have no comments or concerns regarding ownership of the lake bed or the proposed planet subdivision. Next group of comments is around concerns around nighttime lighting and minimizing light pollution. And with respect to this, a condition of draft approval has been included. Uh, regarding outdoor lighting and streetlights, ensuring these are designed to minimize the impact on dark skies. Uh, the clubhouse and the dock block are part of the draft plan of subdivision. And the township will be able to include provisions within the subdivision agreement requiring certain standards for outdoor lights and streetlights. If there is existing lighting that does not address these standards within the proposed subdivision. Those may need to be replaced or altered to ensure that they address those standards. Next uh, group, and I'd say there's probably the most comments that we received and the most concerns received was with respect to potential impacts to water quality and quantity on the lake and creek. From the proposed developments, including concerns about golden brown algae. Concerns about the potential addition of phosphorus from fertilizer use and septic weeping. So take a little bit of time to outline how from a staff perspective, we feel these concerns have been addressed or will be addressed. So as noted previously, the hydro geological study, the site servicing study and stormwater study were peer reviewed by R J Burnside. The studies, including the environmental impact assessment, were also reviewed by Soggy Valley Conservation Authority. Following the initial review, the peer reviewer and S V C A had initial questions and comments. And additional information was provided by the applicant's consultants. And based on this further information and based on a further review from the peer reviewer and S V C A. They are satisfied that there will be no impacts from the proposed subdivision on the lake. Subject to the recommended conditions of draft approval. And these include things like detailed design and plans associated with lot grading, site servicing and stormwater management prior to final approval. One of the key findings of the detailed studies confirmed by the peer reviewer was that the underground water flows away from the lake on the subject lands. It actually flows uh, east uh, to west on the subject lands. And therefore, any affluent from the septic systems will be flowing away from the lake. Um, any fertilizer and phosphorus would also be directed away from the lake. The drop plane conditions also require the implementation of the E I A recommendations, the environmental impact assessment recommendations. And the recommended setbacks from the lake and creek and those will be addressed as part of the submission agreement and the zoning by law amendment. The township of Southgate staff also recommended in their staff report. That the township consider implementing a mandatory septic inspection project or program. For the existing lots and septic systems adjacent to Wilder Lake. And county staff would encourage the township to consider such a program as these programs have been really successful in other jurisdictions. Uh, and they will help to ensure the long term health of the lake. Should a mandatory inspection program be established, county staff would recommend that all septic systems adjacent to and in a close proximity to the lake. Uh, be included. Um, this is just an extra precautionary measure and to make sure that all the septic systems in around that lake are functioning properly. Um, as mentioned previously, the subject lands are designated as inland lakes and shoreline within the county official plan and the township official plan. And and this is a settlement area designation and contemplates development of this nature. Uh, there were questions about whether or not a lake carrying capacity study should be required. And based on our current official plan policies, that study is only required where a proposal is to expand the inland lakes and shoreline designation. For any development proposed within the existing inland lakes and shoreline, a hydro geological study and site servicing study is required. In order to address the servicing policies in both the principal policy statement and the county official plan. As addressed in the previous staff report, there is a small portion of the plan that is uh, outside of the designated inland lakes and shoreline. And section nine point one of the county plan. Indicates that boundaries between land use types shown on schedule A are approximate, except where they coincide with physical features such as roads, rail corridors, rivers and streams. And where such features do not exist, the exact determination of boundaries is the responsibility of the county. And the county may permit alterations from these boundaries where it's satisfied that the intent of the plan is being maintained. So the inland lakes and shoreline designation uh, on the west portion of the of the inland lakes and shoreline on this property. Doesn't coincide with the physical feature and therefore permitting minor alteration from the boundary can be considered. The planning justification report that was submitted with the application requests that the county interpret the building envelopes as wholly within the inland lakes and shoreline area. Um, as the proposal represents a logical road and lot layout while optimizing the area for development. So based on section nine point one and based on the fact that the building envelopes for these lots are primarily located within the seminary boundary. County staff have interpreted that the subdivision is wholly within the inland lakes and shoreline area. With respect to concerns about surface water runoff, the environmental impact assessment recommends that certain grasses be planted. In the proposed drainage swales, which will serve to attenuate uh, the phosphorus from fertilizers prior to entering the stormwater ponds. Staff have also recommended a condition that's been included, uh, which requires through the substance agreements, the establishment of what we're calling an environmental management plan. This would serve as a land stewardship document for future land or landowners outlining best practices for. Things like limiting or prohibiting certain types of fertilizers, limiting uh, limitations on shoreline clearing. Uh, maintaining those side yard swales to enhance grass swales, things of that nature. The subject agreement, along with those special provisions, will be registered on the subject lands. And subsequently registered on title to each lot created within the proposed development. So this will just provide additional protection to ensure that the lake and creek are not impacted from the proposed development. Um, we also received questions regarding the role of the county township in the post development period. So the proposed subdivision does propose the creation of a new road that would be a township road and would be the responsibility of the township to maintain that road. The proposed subdivision would also create three stormer manager blocks or ponds as well as the dock block. And these would be established as common elements through a future condo exemption application. And therefore, ongoing maintenance of these features will be the responsibility of the condominium corporation. There would be easements provided to the township over these blocks. Which would allow the township to access these lands if they ever had to maintain these features, should the condo corp not fulfill its future obligations. In terms of potential impacts from the proposed development, uh, further detailed design will need to be provided to the township and soggy valid conservation authority for final approval and clearance. And then the county will ensure that all the conditions of draft approval have been have been addressed prior to issuing final approval of the subdivision. There's also concerns about increased pressure on the lake for recreation. On uh, the roads for transportation and pedestrians. As well as concerns about air pollution, noise and sound levels and increased burden on plants and wildlife. So the residents of the subdivision will be utilized in the lake for recreational purposes as well as the roads within the area. With respect to the use of the lake for recreational purposes, as part of that environmental management plan that I was talking about before. We've included provisions in there about best practices for making sure that um, any. Recreational use of the lake would minimize noise associated with, uh, for example, watercraft. As well as best practices to ensure that boats are minimizing any impacts from a water quality pers- perspective. Um, with respect to other concerns regarding noise and sound levels, the township does have a noise by law that regulates noise. Um, other potential impacts to plants and wildlife have been reviewed as part of the environmental impact assessment. And those recommendations within that documents are contained and captured as part of the draft plan conditions. Uh, the township has also recommended condition of approval requiring the pedestrian linkages be provided to accommodate and promote safe walking routes. We also receive questions why there are special allowances being requested regarding lot sizing in the proposal. And there are three lots, uh, lots five, twelve and nineteen that require relief from the lot frontage requirements. Um, as these are what we call the pie shaped lots, uh, the bends of the proposed road allowance, which usually result in a reduced lot frontage. However, it should be noted that these three lots are are three of the largest proposed lots within the subdivision. And therefore, the proposed dwelling well and septic system can still be properly cited. In terms of agency comments received, uh, no objections or concerns from historic soggy matey, Bruce Telecom, East Lincoln Hydro One. Can a post will be uh, requiring delivery of mail through a central community mailbox. Union gas is noted, there's no natural gas plant in the area. As noted earlier, Soggy Valley Conservation Authority initially had some questions and concerns. Those have been addressed through additional information and we've included recommended conditions of draft approval to address their comments. And the township of Southgate and peer viewer, as mentioned, uh. The township council directed staff to prepare a zoning amendment to implement this proposed plan of subdivision at a future council meeting. And also supported the recommended conditions of draft approval that have been incorporated into the the staff report that's being presented today. R J Burnside concluded that the site can be serviced with individual private wells and septic systems without impacts to the lake. And that the proposed storm management for the site was appropriate. So based on the planning analysis, it's staff's opinion that the proposed plan of subdivision. Uh, subject to the conditions of draft approval has regard for matters of provincial interest on the act. Has regard for matters under section fifty one twenty four of the planning act. Is consistent with French policy statement and conforms to the county official plan and township official plan. And therefore, staff are recommending that the proposed plan be draft approved subject to recommended conditions of draft approval. And happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. There is a question from councillor Potter.
Uh, thank you. Actually, I have a couple of questions. One is, uh. Uh, and this is always an issue, but in the future. Uh, the municipality may wish to expand its sewer and water services to that area. Would there, is there any way, Randy, that you can put something in that that says that these people will, these homeowners will agree. Uh, to within ten years, say, uh, hook into that that system. If they're allowed to build a uh, uh, septic uh, system today. Uh, that would be one way of ensuring the long term protection of the water course. Uh, and my second question would be along the same lines. What protection do we have or guarantee do we have that people will not play with the uh. The landscaping in a way that allows runoff to go into the water courses. Uh, you know, somebody decides they wants one, they want a better view of the lake. From their dining room window, so they they decide to trim some trees and and landscape the ground so they could see better. Uh, and and that affects the runoff. They in fact create a little. A little stream that carries runoff even from from sites across the street. In the in inner part of the subdivision and carry it into the uh, into Wilder Lake or into the creek. So. Uh, those two, those two questions. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, through you, uh, Warren Hicks. So based on the first question, so there was a servicing. Uh, option study that was completed and a part of that study, of course, is to review. Um, you know, go through the kind of the servicing hierarchy to see if if it's feasible to. Um, to extend uh, full services to this area. And based on the current location of of any location of full services to Wilder Lake. They determine is not feasible at this stage, not to say that. Well into the future that it there could be that opportunity.
And that's, that's actually what I'm thinking of. It's not this week, but but uh, some years down the line because it is something that. Uh, when it comes up, people are resistant to it because of the cost and it won't get any cheaper. So, uh. You know, if there could be anything added. To the deeds, for example, to to let these people know that someday they might be serviced and and they will be expected to sign on. I don't know if that's even legally possible. I'm sort of asking for your expertise on it.
Yeah, it's some of that that we can explore and have further discussions with the township to see if it's something that could be included as part of the of the subdivision agreement. Just based on, you know, where we know of where proximity is to full services, it's unlikely that that will occur, but. You never know fifty years down the road, it could. That would obviously have to be assessed through an environmental assessment process at that time. And then the township could explore as part of that. Requirements, passing of bylaws to require hookups if if they were to ever extend. Services to that area. So but it is something that we can definitely explore with with the township to see if it's possible to include some sort of provisions in the subdivision agreement. With respect to the second part, the zoning amendment will identify areas within the bylaw that's. Required the setbacks from the lake and the creek. Those will be those environmental protection areas. So any development or site alteration within those areas would require a permit from the conservation authority. And of course would require any amendment to the zoning by law can be then enforced through the zoning. So. So that is something that is usually the the safeguard, so to speak, as part of that.
Randy, Barb, you're next. Say councillor clump is my apologies.
It works too. Thanks so much, Miss Warden, and thanks, Randy, for this. I'm just wondering, looking at the plan of subdivision, if. Entrance and egress is with only one point of access is a concern. And if there's opportunity in the future to connect in some other direction for in case of emergency requirements.
Yeah, through you, Gordon Hicks. Great question. We do actually have provisions and policies in our official plan with respect to. The amount of lots that can be considered on single entrances and and access points. And the thresholds, I'm just going by memory, I think it's eighty five units or or less can be considered on. A single access point, anything above eighty five units to I think it's a hundred and fifty units. Requires a single access point as well as an emergency access point. And then anything above a hundred and fifty units requires at least two access points. That are fully open and maintained. So. Given that there's twenty nine lots being proposed here, it definitely falls under the threshold where we would require at least even emergency. Access point. So that's, yeah, based on our current policies, that's how we've 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 kind of framed the requirements for. Access to to proposed developments.
Thank you. Good. I don't see any other hands. And so with that said, perhaps it's time to call the question. Is there anyone opposed to the motion as you see it in the report? I see no hands, therefore I'm going to say that's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Returning next to item six C, which is a sand domes, which you've heard some about already in the ten year capital. Report. This item is moved by councillor Desai and seconded by councillor Milne if he is there. And Jim, I believe that you are on deck for this one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden and county council. The purpose of this of this report today is seek approval for two hundred and five thousand to repair some of the domes. We've had specialized inspections done this past spring. And it's determined that these five domes, five domes need repair. The money would be taken of surplus or out of the reserves at the end of the year. Nothing major has to be done. There's five panels at Chatsworth that needs to be done. That's the most severe. But. The Dundalk dome is basically just a reshingle and we replaced plywood. Eighteen is the lintel is needs to be replaced in the side trust. Clarksburg dome may need a panel replaced or two and then some. Structural repairs just done with two by fours and Kimberly dome is just patching some. Around the doorway, there's some holes developed in the tarp. So that is the extent of the report. Are there any questions on on that?
Yeah, there are seven domes in total. Which are the two that don't require repair?
Seven domes in total of. Fever sham. Doesn't require, but lots in a different report. Pat is preparing a report on fever sham. And the other dome is Dundalk or no, sorry, Dundalk at Markdale. So it requires a bit of work, but it'll be done at a report on it will be done at a different time.
Thank you, council. Any questions? Do not see any hands. So thank you, Jim, and I'm going to call the question. Oh, sorry, councillor Milne.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just in respect to a comment that Pat had made. A while ago now in his report, I guess it was in the capital. A lot of places are going away from these domes. And certainly some of these domes, at least if not all of them, are getting a few years on them. At what point do you decide, yeah, this isn't worth fixing anymore and let's go to something new or different?
I think it's important to get the engineer's input. We've been using an engineer to. To give us a determination on life expectancy of the domes. And as you can see by what they've suggested as by twenty thirty. The Dundalk dome will be done. We've got money in the budget in twenty twenty seven or will have for the replacement of Chatsworth. The eight and dome still has has quite a few years to go on it. Clarksburg, we're not exactly sure, but we think maybe by twenty twenty six, it'll require Kimberly. On the other hand, it was a fabric dome that was built by Maple. Fabrication company and they no longer in a business. So. We have to come up with a different solution there. So we'll probably go with the conventional building last at least fifty years. But as far as the determination, we leave up the basically up to the engineer to tell us when the life expectancy is over.
Okay, that's fine. I I've I've always encouraged Pat to build a new one in Dundalk, but that's up to him. Okay, thank you.
Next councillor Potter.
Thank you, Warden, and through you. Yeah, are there opportunities for partnerships either with the provincial? Government or with the lower tier governments? To to share some of these facilities?
Through you, Mr. Warden, we do have arrangements with. For a few different domes, so you know, Clarksburg, we're in a about a fifty seven. Forty three split with the town of Blue Mountains for that building. And there's a few other arrangements, I think, at Sarawak perhaps. But yeah, we look towards those and and fever sham as well. We're still in a real. A cost sharing at that fever sham as well. So we do look, look for those.
Okay, council partner. Thank you. I do not see any other hands, so I'm going to pose recall the question. So anyone opposed to the motion in the report? See no one opposed. I'm going to say that that is carried. Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Moving on to item sixty, we're now dealing with an item that was deferred from June twenty fourth and that's patrol D. Property purchase. Our CAO is on deck. It is being moved by councillor Desai and seconded by councillor Allmery. Kim, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Council, as you know, this report was deferred in order to provide an opportunity. For you to reflect on the request made by the old Durham Road Pioneer Cemetery Committee. Which was included in the consent portion of today's agenda. One of the items that we we didn't cover when we discussed this briefly at our last meeting and I didn't want to. Certainly. Emphasize to council is that no matter what decision is taken here. Staff wanted to confirm our commitment to. Doing more to work with organizations to increase the visibility of the county's black history. To raise awareness, to nurture and to support community group efforts in in this regard. And bring better heritage awareness to our work. Gray Roots has a very long history in. Providing information, education and support to the initiatives like. The emancipation festival, great, Black History Month events, etc. And we want that to continue, but we also know that there's more that we can do. Earlier this year, the newly formed Gray County Black Heritage Society. Was struck and we want to work with them to continue to, I think. Expand the reach of the Northern Terminus publication. And just sites like the cemetery and others around the county to make sure that. People are aware of those that they have an opportunity to understand the history that's that. Gave rise to them and and to just to generally, you know. Be respectful of 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 the history of this part of Gray County. So. I I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this point.
Thank you, Kim. Are there any questions of council? Councillor Potter.
Thank you. I just wondered, it just struck me that perhaps. We could think about having a committee and I would be happy to bring forward a notice of motion. That that staff come back with a report on how we might. Do even more and and consider indigenous and and other histories. Because we have so many. We don't tend to think of gray as as. A multicultural society, but it really is. And so I wonder if there's a way we could, we could try to take all of that. Into account and maybe start with a staff report. And I wonder what the CAO would think of that. That might help us kickstart an effort to. Whether it would take the form of a of a standing committee or some other way of. Of bringing this into the mainstream of our thoughts. As a council and and future councils and staff and help us to make sure that we understand. The many, many histories that belong here.
Right. Thank you for that councillor Potter and certainly Jill Patterson has been. Even preceding the issue that's before us today had been actively working with places like the the Sheffield Museum. And with. Developing, as you heard today, some of the history and the voices of gray, etc. So I think it's a great idea. If Jill can bring back kind of a summary of the various groups that. She's working with through Gray Roots and what some of the initiatives are that are are planned. Going forward, I think that would give a solid kind of foundation for that work and then you could reflect on that and think about whether there's. Something more that you'd like to see or or be a part of. And I'm sure there are people around the table have lots of good ideas and also several of you have museums or other. Cultural. Organizations within your own communities. And so again, I think it's really important that they're all kind of. United and and working together whenever there's an opportunity to do so.
Council Potter.
If I may follow up, I think that's great and I bow to your expertise and how to get this in motion. Because that's really what I'm trying to do. So bringing a notice of motion. Would would help or if you feel that you could, you have all you need to go ahead and do that, then. Then I'm happy to leave it to you and to staff. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sounds council Potter like a motion may not be necessary. I think staff has taken note. Something will come up. Anyone else on this item? Very good. Then I will call the question on the motion before you. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, I'm going to say that that too is Carrie. We'll now turn back to the Meaford resolution, which was an item five F. I will need mover and seconders, so I'm going to suggest that councillor Columbus will move and seconded by councillor Potter. Councillor Columbus, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden and to fellow councillors. I am happy to see that the recommendation from staff coming forward on this. Resolution from the municipality Meaford is suggested to be forwarded on to Gray County's affordable. Housing task force, but I thought it perhaps would be appropriate to bring a little bit of background. To how where this found money actually came from. So with your indulgence, I just wanted to to fill that in. The Fourth Canadian Division Training Center in the municipality of Meaford is owned by the Department of National Defense. Excuse me. However, the property management is by Public Service and Procurement Canada. Good grief. Sorry. It's called PSPC and I never remember what that stands for. But according to the Pilt Act, which is the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Act of nineteen eighty five. The federally owned property is exempt from provincial and municipal taxes. Even though a grant is paid to the local authority based on the assessed value. Of that land as if it were taxable. So it is the responsibility of the Public Service and Procurement Canada to remit that grant annually. But since twenty thirteen and up to twenty twenty, this past taxation year. The grant or the payment in lieu to our municipality has consistently fallen short of the agreed upon amount. And by extension, of course, this affects the county revenues as well. Many appeals were made over the years to PSPC in this regard. And finally, in April of this past year, a disputed advisory panel hearing was convened. To try and resolve the issue. The hearing evolved over several days and a weekend with four witnesses called by our staff. And in the end, a settlement offer of just over two million dollars was developed. That reflects past tax adjustments. And that included three hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred dollars to the county of Gray and one point six million dollars to Meaford. An important piece to this settlement, however, is the assurance that future payments will be honored. Annually as agreed upon. And of course, this is what we've been struggling with over the years. So this found money and more importantly, the confidence of consistent future. Payments would not have occurred without our municipality's management of the issue, including. Legal fees, which of course were shared and that prompted the recommendation before us this morning. We feel that since both Gray County Council and Meaford's council have identified attainable housing as a focused priority. That it would be appropriate to request that that three hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred dollars of. Found money revenue to Gray County lost and then found again. Be directed to a new housing project in municipality of Meaford. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Columbus. Councillor Soever has a comment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. And I want to congratulate Mayor Columbus and and the Meaford staff on 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 the fine work they've done to to find this missing revenue. You know, I think it's it's very important that all of the municipalities in Gray County, as I've said before. And unfortunately, I didn't get a lot of support on that, but. I know I see that Meaford has now passed the resolution in support. To for everybody to try to find their missing tax revenue. Because I think it is important as this case shows and I'm very pleased to support this. Motion to to dedicate the money back to Meaford. They worked hard to get the money, not only for themselves, but for county and. I encourage all municipalities to do the same.
Thank you. So just for clarification, Madam Clerk, do we have this specific motion before us or are we? Dealing with simply receiving the letter? I need to call for a motion?
So you.
Um, so you have a motion on on the floor right now, Mr. Warden, that was moved by councillor Clumpus and seconded by councillor Potter. Uh, thank you. Put um, that the uh, letter from the municipality of Meaford be forwarded to the Affordable Housing Task Force for consideration. So that's the motion.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Uh, councillor Milne, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, councillor Clumpus, what was the value of, yeah, the value of the settlement uh, for Meaford?
Uh, one point six, 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 five uh, million.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, councillor Desai.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Uh, by agreeing to uh, forward this over to the uh, task force, is county council uh, agreeing to to the request from Meaford? Or are we simply saying, we'll let another body debate this and then bring a recommendation to us and then we can debate the recommendation?
I think that's exactly what's being asked in the motion. It'll be referred to the housing uh, uh, task force and then uh, presumably the task force would have some sort of debate and bring a recommendation back to council.
Thank you, Ms. Warden.
Okay, anyone else on this? Then I will call the question. Is there anyone opposed to the motion before you? I see no hands, so I'm going to say that that is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on now to, um, we do not need a closed meeting uh, session. Uh, item number eight is other businesses. Is there any other business? Seeing none, item number nine is dealing with any notices of motion. Do you have any notices of motion? And I see no hands there. That leaves us then to the adjournment. It's been moved by councillor Burley and seconded by councillor Carlton that we adjourn. Anyone opposed to that? Seeing none, we are now adjourned. Thank you so much.
I see.
Um, Heather, will we be receiving the link in a separate email for the DC? You you're mute.
Heather's mute, yeah.
If you haven't, I will resend it right now.
Okay, thanks.